You guys ready? All right, I would like to call to order the Select Board Meeting of December 7th, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being recorded for RCTV Live. We're on Comcast Channel 22 or Verizon Channel 33, which you would know if you're watching it that way. The videographer for tonight's meeting is Rob. Tonight's agenda focuses on Town Department budgets for fiscal year 24. We're scheduled to see, I think, six presentations tonight. Public services, administrative services, public safety, we'll do fire and EMS, police and dispatchers, then public health, public works, and enterprise funds. And that's our agenda for the evening. So with that, let's kick it off. Phil, do I start with you? Is that where we're starting?
I think we're starting with Jean, actually.
Oh, with Jean. Hi, Jean.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
And you can hear me okay?
Yes. Both.
Great, okay. Great, so thank you for the opportunity to present the Public Services Department Level 1 FY24 budget. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jean Delios, and I am the Assistant Town Manager and Department Head for Public Services. This is a bittersweet presentation, as I am only eight weeks away from my retirement. I'm excited to wrap up. And the way we're going to handle it is I'm going to do public services. Matt is going to do administrative services. The big news is that there's a bit of a reorg and a transition plan underway, so we'll get into that in a minute. But I also wanted to say thank you to the board for your leadership and for your support over the years. Very much appreciated. Okay, well, this is a favorite photo of mine. I wanted to start off with it. This is a photo of the ribbon cutting of the Haven Street Pocket Park. I think most of you are familiar with it. This was an area that had been neglected, that we decided we wanted to do something exciting with, and we created a pocket park, an urban park. This is really a great example of how we work in public services and how we collaborate. This is how we get it done, without a lot of money and a lot of fuss. Special thanks to the DPW, who helped us make this pocket park a reality. They did all the heavy lifting, and it was great. And without this, we would not have been able to do it with the nominal budget that we had. And so that's just an example of how we've worked over the years in public services. I also wanted to thank the staff involvement to get this budget drafted, especially Jenna Fiorenti, our Community Services Director, and our newly appointed Community Development Director, Andrew McNichol, all the other staff, Chuck Tarone from Conservation, all the Team Awesome people over at the Pleasant Street Center, and our REC folks, and the many, many people on the admin staff, all pulling together to get us going. And of course, I couldn't forget veterans, Will and veterans. So thank you, everybody, for pitching in and getting it done. The level-funded budget that I'm going to be presenting really deserves a few qualifiers. And I think you probably know at least some of this, but I wanted to highlight a few things to really emphasize how we're able to stay level-funded. So grant funds, which I know everybody likes to hear about grants, we are extremely proactive in securing grants, using grants to fund activities, projects, administering grants, reporting grants. It's a lot of work, but it gets us to the kinds of things we want to get done. In addition, the revolving funds, the permits revolving funds in particular, play a big role in this budget and supplement and provide support to the budget. Outside of this budget, there's lots of other ways that we get resources, like the trust funds that the Council on Aging oversees, and we use that for programming. Regionalization, the Metro North Regional Housing Services Office is something we created here in Reading several years ago. And that is a regional housing office that is a consortium of five communities, with Reading as the lead. And this way, we're able to spread the cost of running that regional housing office and the work that we do in affordable housing, and spreading that cost across five communities. We used to have it staff-administered, and now we have it through a consulting contract. So that's a little bit of a change in the budget over the past year. The other thing that we do is the Veterans Services, which really doesn't reflect in our budget, but we are able to get reimbursed 75% from the state. And so the budget dollars that you see for Veterans Services really are miniscule when you factor that in. And then lastly, just partnering with anyone and everyone in the community. And a good example of that is the Wellness Wednesday program that we started through the ARPA funds. Again, thank you to the Select Board for your help with those funds and your vote to secure those funds for elder services. But with that, as a resource, we were able to work with the library and really do a combined effort to provide additional programming on Wednesday mornings called Wellness Wednesday. And it's been very successful. We're going to be launching that again after the new year. So that is pretty much how we are able to stay level-funded. This is the Board's Committees and Commissions, another important piece of what we do. We work extensively with the volunteers. And these are not just your average volunteers. Many of them are committing countless hours. They're dealing with statutory requirements. It's highly technical, and it's a big ask. And so we collaborate with those volunteers, and it's a crucial part of our work. We work with the Council on Aging, with Recalc, and that's just one example of how we're able to go forward with a vision for elder services and for the Pleasant Street Center, whatever the next iteration is. This is the org chart that will be before town meeting in April of 2023. It gives you an early peek into what we mean when we say the Town Manager's reorg plan. It's going to make some changes, and you'll see the green box here that shows Administrative Services slash Public Services with one Assistant Town Manager, and that's Matt Cronellis. And then all of the divisions that fall in that newly-formed box, including what was Public Services, which is Community Development, Planning, Historical, Conservation and Building, and then Community Services, which is Elder, Human Services, Recreation, and the Veterans Services Officer. So that's kind of how things change up a bit. This is a summary of the FTEs. And so it's basically the same year-over-year. A couple of things, obviously, the Department Head is now a .5 FTE. This is as of when the new, after I leave. And so we've got about three people in administration. And then same with Community Development, that dips down a bit. The Economic Development Director moves to the Town Manager's office. So I didn't include that here. That's a direct report to the Town Manager now. It's funded in this budget, but it's not really an FTE for public services. On the gain side, we are now up to six FTEs in Elder and Human Services. That's the highest we've ever been in my 13 years, so that's a gain. And then the Veterans Services Officer now is a full-time position. That was always a shared or a half-time. So the two Assistant Department Heads, the Community Development Director sits in Community Development. There's three people there. Andrew, Kim, who's the Permits Coordinator, and the Staff Planner, which is vacant right now, but we're in the process of hiring. And then Recreation here, that's where the other Assistant Department Head sits with the other Recreation staff. Economic Development, I'll just go quickly because it's shifting around a bit, as I mentioned. These are some of the key initiatives from the Economic Development Action Plan that we put together back in 2015. And it's really about how can we support economic development and enhance the work that's been done so far, move it forward. I know some of you were at the Economic Development Public Forum that we had a few months ago, and so the momentum is continuing. This is just a snapshot of some grants. You've seen most of this. The one at the very bottom is the Housing Choice Grant, and that's for work to look at Walker's Brook Drive and the possibility of a rotary there. And there are a couple of other smaller ones that reseat in FY23. And this just is a snapshot of kind of what we've done in the past year or so with Economic Development, the Pocket Park, a bunch of new businesses, the Business Improvement District, that I know you've heard a lot about, and the Bistro Table Program. So this just gives you kind of a peek at some of that work. Moving on to building, this really is pretty comparable from prior years. Just want to note that this is as of October 25th, 2022, so I expect it to be about the same as 2021's, trending a little bit lower, but we don't have all the data in yet. We start this process right after Columbus Day, and so that's why the data is a little outdated. And then Conservation, all these acronyms, I apologize in advance. But the real story here is the Blue, which is the minor projects. I'm very excited that we have moved into finding a way to create approvals that are staff-led, and that's through the minor project process. It's a lot simpler, you can do it with staff. It saves everybody a lot of time, and you can see that that trend is increasing. And we're hoping to increase that even more. And the other thing that Chuck wanted me to make sure I mentioned, which is a great point, everything is online now, so same as building. But that's been a great help to get us up to where we want to be in terms of efficiency. The planning work, I could go on and on about. It's the part of the job that I love the most. But I wanted to just kind of give a quick highlight on kind of what we think about when we talk about planning. And really, it's three things. Keeping downtown vital, preserving what's important, and being open for opportunities. Those are our three drivers. And when we think about what we want to do in the future, we're always refining and modernizing zoning. We've got a lot of work that we've accomplished, but we're always continuing to do work in parking management, bike infrastructure, MBTA-related issues, the streetscape, systems capacity, arts and culture. And then we have a bunch of plans here in the middle that we're working on. The Open Space and Recreation Plan, the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, which is funded through a grant, the Housing Production Plan, which I know a lot of you are involved in, and thank you for coming to a lot of the meetings and forums, and then the Net Zero Plan that we also have on our radar. And then just below, unlocking some of the other outside resources and grants and making us move forward. So again, just a list of things that we are working on. And it's very exciting to see a lot of the planning work come together, and we love this stuff. Moving on to Recreation, you guys have all heard about all the excitement with Birch Meadow. It's very, very exciting that we're getting closer and closer. And that is the walking path, Central Spine, with the pavilion, the lacrosse wall, and then of course, the parking area. And then just some other additional information about stats. You know, 4,020 program enrollments, that's a pretty good number. And we're excited that those programs are all, they sell out immediately. And it's still fun to have things like the Downtown Dricker Tree. Very much. This is a property at 186 Summer Ave. Just wanted to highlight that both of the Commissions have been working together on this, along with Town Council. And it has been front and center to try and see what we can do to advance. But both the Historic District Commission and the Historical Commission do a lot of work to really focus on historic preservation, lots of meetings, lots of work. And that's kudos to them. Elder Human Services, you've heard a lot. You heard about the work we've done with Recalc and the UMass Gerontology Institute last night. Very exciting to be at that point after about a year and a half of planning. This slide just kind of highlights some of the things that are happening. I mentioned the Wellness Wednesdays, the Memory Cafe. That's working with families that are dealing with that issue. And then just the bus trips are really welcome, new and enhanced activity. There's been a bunch since the ARPA funds were awarded. And then, of course, the holiday meals, everybody loves that. And we're just excited to really keep that quality programming going at the Pleasant Street Center and using off-site locations that we already own and don't have to pay for, like the library. The one thing about elder services, you know, the Pleasant Street Center, we could go on and on, but it really is the home away from home. And we heard from UMass that even though it has its deficiencies, a lot of people get a lot of benefit from what happens there and really have a love of that center. So we will continue and move forward with all the work that's being done on what the next step is. But I wanted to also highlight that the numbers are back up again, and the programs are attracting a lot of people. We're back up to before pre-pandemic levels, and I think you heard that the other night. I think that the one other thing I would want to highlight in all the things that we do is that transportation is still a big need, and you heard that last night from UMass as well. We do have medical transportation, ATS is the vendor that we use, and that's funded by the Reading Response Program. The wheelchair rides are available. One thing we also talked about last night, or UMass talked about, was, you know, working more, getting the word out a little bit more on what we do offer. So that's something we're going to be working on. But I want to say kudos to Recalc and the Council on Aging for working together so well and getting us queued up for the future. And these are just some fun pictures. Veterans Services, the VSO is processing more claims than ever, and I think that's to his credit. He's out in the community, he's continuing with scuttlebutt. And if anybody, I think probably all have met Will Bellier at this point. He's really excited to be in the community and to be working with veterans and had just a tremendous Veterans Day ceremony. And we're looking forward to the Memorial Day ceremony in the spring. So outreach has increased, and the number of veterans seeking benefits is up. This 40% is a moving target, so we did have a pretty high number. It's dropped down by a few. So it makes budgeting a little bit tricky, but you'll see in the ask that we're going to be asking for some more funding. And again, that all gets reimbursed by the state to the tune of 75%. So here's where we are. The expenses that we're requesting to increase are for expanded programming at the Pleasant Street Center, and that's $20,500. The veterans, which I just mentioned, are mostly the monthly benefits and a small increase in the administrative line item, and that's $31,000. And then some additional hours, which actually, they don't impact the budget, but I just wanted to highlight here that we're planning to increase two part-time positions, the Senior Center Coordinator and the Program Coordinator for REC. And so that's, the Senior Center Coordinator is, I think, official. The REC is a work in progress, so we're not quite there yet. And this is the summary of where we're at. And as you can see, it's a level-funded budget. And that's it for me.
Questions, folks?
Trying to look this way. I'm going to look the other way. Thank you. Thanks, Jean. One quick question on the budget recap, the additional resources for expanded programming, $20,500. None of the $600,000 portion of the ARPA money is being used for that? We need an additional $20,500?
Well, I think that's a good question. So the money that we got from ARPA is definitely being used. It's being used for the Wellness Wednesday, it's being used for the bus trips. What we're trying to do here is surgically introduce some more budget dollars so that we can gradually grow the operating budget. We think we're going to be in a new building at some point, and that's going to mean more dollars for operating. And this budget is here to really focus on operating, things like the lunch program and some of the programs that we charge a small fee for. We heard from UMass that people really don't want to pay $2 for Zumba class. It's that kind of thing.
All right. And then the ARPA funds are being used for the other two positions that you mentioned here at the bottom? The additional hours?
Yes.
And those positions currently exist, and these are just adding additional hours to them?
That's correct, yep. The Senior Center Coordinator is funded at 25 hours a week, going to 37 and a half. The Program Coordinator for REC is 24, going to 37 and a half.
And do you know how much money we have left out of the ARPA money for the $600,000 portion?
I don't have that. I can get that for you, though. We talked about with the Council on Aging and with Recalc coming up with a reporting structure. So we haven't quite figured out the best way to report that out, but that's a work in progress.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Chris, to follow on Chris's questions. Yeah, I was trying to get a sense. So we heard from John O'Neill that similar communities are budgeting three times as much as we budgeted for the Senior Center. If we, if my understanding is that we're around 250, and other communities are maybe staffing around the 700, 800 range. So I was a little, I'm surprised that the $20,000 ask is so small, but so great. ARPA can supplement it, and I understand where you're going with that. To follow on his question, will the 600,000 ARPA funds be exhausted, say, by June 30 in 2023? Or where do you see that going?
Yeah, I think we were planning on at least two years.
Two years worth of funding?
Yeah.
Okay, so 300 per year, so that gets us... So we could talk about what we're really funding is via $600,000 a year versus 250 for a couple of years?
Yeah, the, and, you know, please realize that the ramp-up time, obviously, we lost a few months, but the last time that I pulled a report was the middle of November. And at that point, we had used about 5% of the $900,000. So of the entire amount. So we have until 2026 to use the funds. We will certainly not use the funds by, you know, by this...
End of this.
Even this coming fiscal year. Absolutely not. Now, the $250,000, I think it's a little bit of a misnomer also, right? I mean, as Jean said, we will now have six full-time employees, right? And combined with the expenses, we're probably closer to half a million dollars than we're putting towards. So it's, you know, it's not quite the $250,000 that have been talked about in public.
Okay, well, maybe at some point that it might be nice for us to have a better idea, and we could communicate that to the seniors, like what, maybe we need to do a better job of sort of... We've gotten a request from one of the Council on Aging members several times. Who's spending the money? Who's got it? Where can I go? What's it being spent on? So maybe we could be a little more proactive. And like you said, I'm sure they'd love to hear only 5% has been spent, and here's what we're spending on. Somehow communicate that. Okay. Jean, I just wanted to thank you for all your many years of service to the town of Reading. And I don't know what you're going to do with yourselves, like late at night during the week, so. Thank you for having us.
They got some of the stuff, but thank you very much. Very nice.
If I could just add to your comment, Karen. I think that one of the big changes that hopefully is about to happen is to actually have a full staff and have them all hired. We're not there yet.
No problem.
Something happened today.
Hi, Chris, how are you? Chris, do you need a drink of water? Can I get some for you?
But I think that's part of what's been going on also, is that in some cases, we haven't been fully staffed. We had the pandemic for a couple of years. And, you know, now is an opportunity to kind of spread the wings, to have some more funds for programming. But I still think this is an area that's underfunded. It's going to require more funding for the community, regardless of facilities. It's more operating sorts of issues. And I think it's important, we look at it, having the ARPA funds is great, let's use it judiciously, obviously. And we need to think about what happens after. And just be planning that in, in terms of who the people, what do we need to do to do that? Which actually leads into one other comment or question. As we're restaffing a lot of the areas in town, not just in Human and Elder Services, but in other areas also, the new people coming in, lots of energy, lots of vim and vigor, less experience, less connections, less contacts, less other things. I hope that we're putting in some funding for training and thinking about how we can kind of add some of these other things to those folks so that the high-speed running gets traction with contacts, connections, and other capabilities. And I don't know, I haven't looked granularly yet to see if that's in there under training budgets and things like that. But I hope that's a consideration that we're going to have in this budget and also some of the others as well. Sorry, I kind of jumped in, I figured I got that. Jack, any...
Jean, thank you so much. I've learned a lot from you in our relatively short time working together. Just a question on the request for additional programming at the Pleasant Street Center. Are you seeing demand for like more volume, more variety, all of the above? And the reason I ask is, you know, we just had our, the survey results, as you know, last night. And, you know, there's, it was some really interesting data about the kinds of uses. So I guess what I'm asking is, like, what will this additional, you know, increase get you? Is it, you know, volume, variety, staffing?
There's two things that we want to try and do better with. And that is, we want to try and figure out a better way to provide... we want to try and figure out a better way to provide meals, lunch, maybe not every day. There's lots of different models for lunch. When we had lunch before the pandemic, we did it through Mystic Valley Elder Services, and so we have a small budget for that baked in here. And I think we collectively all decided that we would like to raise the bar on that and have high-quality lunch offerings, even if it's not every day. So some of that is, we haven't figured out exactly what the model's going to be, so I don't really know how much of that we can afford. But there's that need, and there's also this small fee that we charge people for, like, the Zumba classes. We'd really like to eliminate that. That's probably more important than the lunch, is to stop doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Carol, what do you think?
Thanks, yeah, real quick. No, thanks, Jean, for all your years of service, of course, and hopefully the restaurants up and running that your husband opened. I'm not sure if it is, but...
Not yet, not yet. January.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
And just a quick, just a quick question on the REC. Did we, I know there's been some shuffling around of positions in between Jenna and now we have Ariel, but is it the need there for the increased hours? I know it's not much, but is it, are we offering more programming? Is it, are things lagging behind because we don't have enough staff on that aspect?
Yeah, I think, you know, with Jenna moving into the role of Community Services Director, she's really looking to get a full team behind her in REC. And there's a lot, there's a lot happening in REC, as you know. There's a lot that's going to happen in REC. The Birch Meadow alone is going to be a huge undertaking. So I think she just wants to make sure, you know, we got all systems go on the REC front. And yeah, I'd like to see more things added, the more, the better.
And last question, thanks. Has there been any analysis done on staffing needs if we were to build, renovate, you know, and add eight thousand square feet to our existing square footage? Has that been five more, five full-time people, three full-time people? Has anyone thought of that, that far down the road?
Well, I'm hoping that we're going to be getting together after the first of the year to map out next steps. So we haven't gotten there yet, and I'm not sure if that would be part of a feasibility study, maybe in the future. We certainly have the funding, thanks to the ARPA funds, to do a comprehensive assessment of what we're going to need going forward. So I'm very confident that we can get that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome, so two quick things. One, just to share, thank you, folks, for already bringing it up. Jean, thank you very much for your service to this community and all the different things you've been involved with, and thanks, folks, for bringing that up. Fidel, what do you say? Did Mary Ann have a question online?
Yes, right on the right.
Great, Mary Ann, please.
Hi, thank you, Mary Ann Downing, FinCom. FinCom's not called to order, but I told Ed I'd be in on this meeting. So first, let me add myself to the chorus of thanks to Jean. I've followed her and talked to her a lot about planning issues at different meetings, and she's been very helpful and a dedicated person. We're going to miss you. So I have questions on three quick areas. First, I'm probably going to echo what Ms. Herrick said, which I agree with, which is asking about, more about the way the ARPA money was spent. Can I just clarify? So the three hundred K in ARPA is not going towards operations, it's expenses?
The three hundred thousand in ARPA...
Like, three hundred K a year, I mean.
Oh, well, you know, what we presented to the ARPA committee is a whole laundry list of items. The timeframe on when we'll get that done, I think to Fidel's point, it's probably going to be a little bit longer than a couple of years. So I'm not sure about the math on that.
Yeah, no, I was trying to do the math, and I'm thinking, okay, three hundred thousand a year is twenty-five thousand a month. I mean, you could be spending a thousand dollars a day. The senior center's open on pizza for the seniors and bagels or something, so please try to spend that money. I know there's at least one COA member that you'll make happy. So that was just a note on that. One quick note on the veterans thing, and maybe this is something I recall Sharon Engstrom bringing up in FinCom meetings in the past. The veteran services line was going down because we had reductions in the number of veterans, and you mentioned it's unpredictable, and now it's going up. Do we think it's because we're doing better outreach with the full-time veterans coordinator? Why do you think the number has varied, new veterans or better outreach?
Yeah, it's a couple of things. I think having a full-time veteran services officer who's very excited and wants to help people is part of that. But what's also happening is, as a result of that, there are veterans who get on, and then the state decides they can only get on for short term, and then they're off. So that's why it's a moving target, and the accommodated cost, we don't really know what it's going to be. So rather than...
It's not a very big budget line. I think years ago it was like twenty-five K or something. It's not a huge amount.
No, it's not, and, you know, it's kind of like how we budget for, you know, a lot of the other things. We're kind of guessing.
Okay, gotcha. And my last question is on a different area. Back in the section on strategic planning with MBTA communities, I guess I was thinking about that. I don't know if you saw the Boston Globe article this week where there were six communities getting penalized. I think Uber and Saugus were among them for not getting in their preliminary plan in time, and they're not getting their Mass Works grants and other grants. So I'm presuming Reading got the information in time, and I'm just curious, will we get our plan, is the plan to get our, you know, proposed zoning done? So are we going to be dependent on any grants from that in the future? I get a little mixed up from what we heard at town meeting about the grants, like, for the Haven Street project. I can't remember if that was a Mass Works grant or another one, but I just don't know if we have any grants or financial impact dependent on our getting that zoning done next year.
Yeah, we're still sorting through a lot of those details, but to your first point about are we with the other communities that missed the boat? No, we're not. We filed everything, and that was Julie Mercier, who, you know, was right on it. We're getting our plan together, we're following all the deadlines, so we're in lockstep with what we need to do for MBTA communities. Some of the other details, we're still waiting for some guidance from the state, so I don't have all those other answers, but I can tell you with confidence we are hyper-focused on this.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you very much. That's all my questions. I'll lower my hand. Thank you.
Shall we move on to Matt? Matt, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Let me just share my screen. Okay, could everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you, and I did want to also thank Jean for her support, not just helping us through this last budget, but through my eight years in Reading. She's really been a friend and a mentor, and I'm going to miss her, and I realize there's big shoes to build. So my name's Matt Cronellis. I'm going to walk you through the FY24 Administrative Services budget tonight, what remains of it, because as Jean mentioned, we are doing sort of a reorganization. So here is the org chart as it stands in 2024. The big difference here on the Administrative Services side of the house is that IT technology is becoming its own department, so it is no longer part of Administrative Services. So at the end of my presentation, I'm going to introduce Kevin Perilla, who's been our longtime IT director. He's been with the town for almost twenty years now, and he is going to move up to the status of department head, and he'll be able to walk you through the IT portion of the budget. Everything else on the Administrative Services side on the org chart has stayed relatively the same for many years. So in Administrative Services, we have the Office of the Town Clerk, Human Resources, the Office of the Town Manager, and Operations. And Administrative Services supports all departments and town boards with communication needs, HR hiring, training, as Mark was talking about, testing benefits, procurement, document management, insurance, safety. Legal services falls under this budget. We're currently now, for FY24, it will be fourteen FTEs. That's with the reduction of the IT staff. That's four members of the IT staff that will be their own department. And salaries will include, in 2024, the results of the pay-in-class study. So that's all baked into the budget projections for this year. So I'm going to walk you through each of the remaining divisions, tell you some of the highlights, and then take some questions, and then turn it over to Kevin, that'll walk you through the technology budget. So we'll start with the Town Manager's Office. This includes, obviously, the Select Board, Finance Committee, Legal Services. It's a level services budget. There'll be a small increase in Legal Services based on current trends, and there's a projected increase of three percent in property and casualty insurance. Otherwise, this is a pretty flat budget in this division. Next, we have Town Clerk and Elections. That includes elections, voter registration, census, town meeting, licenses, document storage. The budget impact this year, there's a couple of things. First, this budget is going down, and you'll see, actually, my overall budget is going down. This happens every year, depending on the number of elections. So for 2024, we're going to have one fewer election. It's going to go from three elections to two, so there's a decrease in those line items. Also, the Town Clerk has been asking for more help for many years, and in the past I've asked for that, and it hasn't been funded. This year, we found, I think, an innovative way to do it. We have a part-time administrative assistant that works currently in the Town Clerk's office, and we also have a vacant part-time operations specialist that would work in Operations Department. That has been vacant for many years. When it was filled, it was filled by retirees that would come in and help out here and there, and that really hasn't happened since COVID. So we're going to combine those two positions together to have another full-time, one full-time position in the Town Clerk's office. So in the Town Clerk's office, there'll be then four full-time employees, including the Town Clerk. And that's really full staffing. That helps with elections, that helps with public records, and all the other important work they do there. So I'm really hoping this part gets funded. It's actually revenue neutral, because we're just combining two already funded positions, so. Operations, this includes procurement, communications, risk management, constituent services, shared staff, postage, maintenance. This is a level services budget. There'll be a reduction in this budget, too, because this is where my salary falls. And as Jean mentioned, we're splitting my salary between, half between public services, half between Administrative Services for this budget. So you'll see a reduction of half my salary there. Also, a highlight of this division, this was the division that led the redesign of the town website. Jane Welling really did a great job on that project, and she works in this division in Operations. And then we have Human Resources. That includes hiring, training, testing. It services all town departments, school department, life department, and retirees. And that's an important point that I try to drive home every year, that it's not just town departments that HR serves. School department, life department, and retirees' benefits all run through that HR department. So it's a very busy department. Sean Donu has done a great job running that department for the last few years. And I just can't stress enough the importance of the work that they do there and how we're dealing with life department employees, retirees, school department employees, not just town hall and town employees every day. There's a reduction in this budget, too, because last year, we put eighty-five thousand in to fund the results of the pay-in-class study. So if you remember a town meeting, November town meeting, that was then taken out of my budget and distributed across the budget to fund that first phase of the pay-in-class study. So that's no longer there as well. So when you look at the total of my budget in Administrative Services, you'll see a slight decrease. So salaries at a million two, expenses at a million four, total budget about a million and a half, and that's a change of actually minus two percent. But again, the drivers to that are that, you know, half of my salary is taken out, fewer elections, which is a driver every year, and the reduction of the one-time pay-in-class money. So it is a savings, but those are the things that are driving that savings. Everything else is neutral. And so I could take questions on that portion of Administrative Services. Like I said, for the next portion of Administrative Services, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Perilla, who will walk you through the technology budget. But I'm happy to take questions on any of the departments that I just covered.
Karen?
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Matt. I appreciate this. A lot of changes. I just wanted to point out, your bubble says Board of Selectmen, and should be select board.
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay, it's a little one.
I will change that.
So I was, this is great. It's weird to see level-funded budgets, it's weird to see things going down, so.
Yes.
It's a new concept. Okay, interesting.
It will not look that way next year.
Yeah, okay, and we're not to the end of the departments and all of that thing. So, but one thing I wanted to bring up, so the Select Board used to have a line item. Do we have one now? What is it? Okay.
Yeah, in this budget, it is unchanged, and it is fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so we could talk about what we might use in another future agenda. Okay, excellent. That's an easy question. The other question I had, I'm looking at the purple circles, shapes, the community groups. How does the Assistant Town Manager Department Head work with, like, the RCTV Board Directors and the RIAA Board of Directors? How do you see that?
Yeah, I think we work pretty closely. I know before I was even Assistant Town Manager, I worked as Administrative Services Director, worked with several boards. RCTV Board, I worked closely with when we were doing the negotiation for the cable contracts, the cable licenses, and I've also worked the executive director there quite a bit. So I think there'll probably be more contact now. I think in the past, it was sort of project-driven, but now I think it'll be even, you know, more contact with those boards, and I'm available to meet with them anytime.
Okay, so have you, in your recent memory, like, prior to the pandemic, anytime have you been, like, working with the RIAA Board of Directors?
I can't remember a specific time, no.
Okay, and then RCTV, the RCTV Board of Directors, the law changed so that their budget came under the town. So that...
Correct.
And so it sounds like you're also offering them legal assistance as well when we talked about the contract negotiations?
Yeah, no, that, well, that was when we did not so much legal assistance for them, because they're still technically a nonprofit, although the money is run through the town.
Are they a private one, see?
I believe they're still a nonprofit, yeah.
Okay.
But anyway, so RCTV, what I did with them is when we negotiated the contracts for their actual licenses for Verizon and Comcast, members of that board were on my negotiation team, and as was Phil. And so I worked closely with them, and that was the resource that we had for them, yeah. And they were very helpful to us, we were helpful to them in that negotiation.
Okay, I was, so maybe, I'm just thinking out loud here, you know, maybe in the future, maybe there's some opportunity for RMLD to work with the ice arena authority, and maybe you end up being the conduit to sort of help them, you know, with our net zero plan and our climate goals. Okay, thanks, I understand. And I know it's been a long pandemic, so, like, you have to remember way back. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, no, thank you.
Other questions, board members? Carol?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying. Thanks, Mark, and thanks, Matt. Two things. First, just like I mentioned at Chuck the last time that he was here, I appreciate you using the same color scheme that the Reading website is currently using. And then on page four, I have something completely different than what was shown on your screen.
Yeah, I updated some of the slides, but which one is...
Down one or back one? Yeah, that one. Yeah, that one. So you have three percent in property and I have fourteen percent.
Fourteen, yeah. It was actually, it was a fourteen percent increase last year and it is not going to be that this year. It's still pretty much a guesstimate because we get the numbers from Maya every year. But I talked to Jane Wellman, who is our risk management person, and there'll be an increase. But last year, it was just, we had a large increase of fourteen percent. But that's not, I'm told that's not going to happen this year. But I didn't catch that until after I turned the slides over to Caitlin. So I changed that before it came tonight.
So what, did you mention the legal was going up?
So, yeah, so legal, I think what I put in was another ten thousand dollars for legal because we've been trending in that direction and we checked with, I think we checked with Sharon as well. And she said it's probably good to increase that budget just so we're not going over. So it's a slight increase, but it's not, you know, it's not tremendous.
Is there a reason that we're trending in that direction? Is it just?
You know, just, with legal, it's the whole town, you know, a lot of different departments and including the select board, but also, you know, planning. Almost every department uses town council and that, you know, that budget has been increasing, you know, every year.
All right. Thank you much.
Okay, thank you.
Karen.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. And could you please remind me what the, I remember that total legal budget being like in the neighborhood of at least last year, forty to fifty, is that?
So the total, the total legal budget for town council services last year was.
That's right, that's right. Sorry, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that, all right.
Oh, no, I would love to hear the answer, no, sorry.
Okay, sure, I didn't know, was two hundred and seventy-five and we were going to increase that to two hundred and eighty-five this year.
Okay.
Is that, is that a fiscal, was that a fiscal?
Yeah, fiscal year, yeah.
So ended twenty-two, six thirty twenty-two? Was two hundred and seventy-five thou, I'm just trying to figure.
Well, that's what we budgeted last year.
That's bad.
And it was trending higher, so.
And then I think the only other question I had, I thought I had seen an email about a grant that we received for digitization. Would that be in the next section or in this or?
It can be.
I don't know if Kevin wants to talk about the digital, but I think he was involved in that.
And anyway, kudos for, yeah, for getting that because everything like that helps, so.
Okay.
So a couple of things, Matt. One, I know that we get on the legal budget, we kind of get my item summary. I think it's in kind of by category. That probably would be a good thing for us to make sure we're seeing as the board. So we can kind of explore what's going on and where the changes take place. So if I can formally request that, that'd be great to see.
Yeah.
Second is for your budget, what would be helpful to me, and actually on all of the budgets, is comparisons. So for example, you've got the salaries and expenses on the budget. I know there are changes, but it's helpful to see both the previous year and percent change and then we can kind of talk through what it is. So here, I'm assuming, but I'd like you to correct me, salaries are down because you're getting shared and expenses are up a little bit. Is that kind of what's going on?
Yeah, that's pretty much what's going on. The pay-in-class money that was in Sean's budget last year, that eighty-five thousand, that was in an expense line item. And it crossed over to salary line items based on the town meeting back in November. So that actually increased, I mean decreased expenses a little as well. But I could get you those exact numbers, though.
Please, I think that in general, I think with the budget presentations, it would be great to see, I don't want to call it the MUNIS format because I hate MUNIS, but some comparison of previous year, percent change, and then a description of why. Because then that helps us understand. I think when we just kind of hear the why and then we see the numbers, to me, it doesn't connect and I'd like to connect them.
Okay, yeah.
And my guess is Mary Ann might reiterate my point.
Sure. We used to provide the MUNIS sheets and they were very confusing.
Yeah.
So I think three or four years ago, we just went to slides. But we can include as much information as you want in the slides going forward.
Perfect, that's it exactly. Yeah, the MUNIS is fine, we can get that, I know you provide that, the finance committee goes through that and that's great. But in addition, I think these summary presentations would be better kind of powered by a comparison. So we can see what the change is and then the description as to why, what happened and what's going on. That just makes it easier for me.
No, that's great feedback. Thanks, Mark.
You ready? All right, so I heard digitalization is going to be part of the next presentation.
Okay, so I'm going to stop my share then and turn it over to Kevin.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, well, good evening. Thanks, Matt. Thank you. If you are not familiar with me, my name is Kevin Ferilla, the Technology Director here, and I'm here to present the Technology Department's proposed FY twenty-four budget. I think maybe the order of these presentations is a little less than ideal. You have people real polished and accustomed to doing these types of presentations. Go first and now you have me, so I apologize for that.
What a great sweater. I love it. It's all festive.
This is a first for me doing a budget presentation. So if you have recommendations afterwards that you wanted to forward along, I have already picked up a couple that Mark just mentioned, actually. So if you forward them along to me afterwards, I'll certainly work them into future presentations, especially with budgets. So this one will not be as polished and as professional as the previous two. I'm sorry about that. I'd like to say that I didn't want to make anybody look bad on my first try, but I don't know if that's it, so. Share out my screen. Were you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, so you know, this introductory slide is basically what we do. We're responsible providing and maintaining the necessary computing and technology or telecommunications infrastructure and the systems for the various departments to use. You know, we have to do this with security in mind for sure and try to integrate as much as possible. We also have a GIS system that we maintain and we have somebody administer here. And really, the custom maps and analysis from that system for all the town departments, boards, committees, commissions is, you know, is another service that we provide. We're similar to what I think you'd imagine any technology department is being. The departments that we support, you know, the customers, our customers, the technology department's customers and what their needs are, is really what makes our technology department unique. The residents are ultimately our customers, but our services are directly provided to various town departments and typically indirectly to the residents. So if it's not clear who those departments are for us, they're all town departments. Police, fire, DPW, the public library, facilities, public services, administrative services, finance and health, the town manager's office as well. And although, you know, the school department's technology is a separate environment, we do as much as possible to coordinate with that department. Julian Power is my counterpart there and Andy Strut and the entire department on the school side. They're just great to work with and we have a great relationship with them. And the town's very fortunate to have the team that the school department has in their technology group. But back to when I said that our technology department is unique because of the needs of the departments that we support, what I mean by that is the departments it supported have a wide array of technology needs. For instance, we have police and fire and health and DPW and inspectional services with employees that are out in the field and they need tools to do their job while out in the field. A police cruiser, an ambulance, or any piece of organized equipment that maybe the DPW uses to do their job or tablets for inspectional services out in the field, you know. There's an aspect to what we support that is not unique in the world, but a unique set of users to support for sure. And we also have DPW systems like the water and sewer that leverage an infrastructure that the technology department's responsible to provide to report on their health, to alert, like, you know, there's a water main break or whatever the systems are reporting is trouble. We help to provide the infrastructure that those things leverage. Remote connectivity needs that changed dramatically over the past few years. We have customer-facing groups like the library and public services and resources that are leveraged directly by the residents and, you know, typically, but provided by those departments. You know, we have, we work with the departments to make sure that those are what is being requested. And then in addition, we have what would be considered typical office workers that are at desks and they're all across all the departments and they utilize a financial system that we provide or, you know, any systems, servers that are needed for the departments to keep the town running. And in addition, we have real technical workers that are in engineering and building management components and video surveillance and access control and things that facilities provide. So it's not that any one of these services is surprising or different, but all of them, like the wide array, the variety is sort of unique. Similar to our towns and cities, but certainly unique for the technology field. So who we are is we have five full-time employees here. I'm a member of the department. Matt said just under twenty years, but it is certainly over twenty years. And I'm the Technology Director and I grew up in Reading and I love working here. I have Patrick McLaughlin, that's our senior computer technician, like assistant administrator, a typical system administrator that you'd find. He's worked here for over ten years and he's played a big part in our group's success. We have Jennifer Iashua, our software coordinator. She's a Reading resident and she's been here for over seven years. She's a, you know, she's technically skilled, but responsible for translating what the department's needs to what the IT services and constraints are here and what rules we need to make sure we follow. So she translates between the technical side and the plain English side, really. And then we have Matt Dean, our GIS administrator. He's a Reading resident also and prior to that, this position had only ever been occupied by another Reading resident, Kim Honigshlager, who worked here for seventeen years. And when Kim retired last fall, we were pretty nervous that, you know, we would be unable to fill that vacancy. Kim built our GIS from the ground up and was well-respected in the field, but we just, I don't know how we were so fortunate, but we found somebody as talented as Matt and he's done a wonderful job picking up from where Kim left off, so. We also have a vacant computer technician position. So if you know anybody looking to be a computer technician, we've got a job, so. So as far as what it is specifically that we're doing, it falls into two categories. The supporting services, you know, the things that everything's built on top of and the regular services that are directly interacted with. Supporting services are the things that nobody else really cares about unless it's down. You know, the fiber network, nobody's going to ask me how the fiber network's doing unless it's not working or the wiring in the building or the network switches. Those are the supporting services that we provide. And those are the things that I probably care about the most, but nobody really besides us in technology cares about. And those are different from the regular directly consumed services. Those are the things that people see. Those are the things that people want updated or new functionality added to. Our financial system or the computer aided dispatch system over dispatch and public safety or office applications like, you know, Word or anything like that. Those are the, you know, we provide those, we support users' use of them. And, you know, I won't waste time getting into the specifics, but we support the foundation and the things that sit on top of it. So that's, you know, I wanted to make sure that I communicated who we are, what we, what types of things we do and who we support. And you see the current fiscal year slide up there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I have had a history of putting people to sleep in a meeting like this, so I apologize in advance. Some of my stuff is not necessarily the most dynamic, so. And I'm not saying that facetiously. I literally have put somebody to sleep in one of these meetings, so. But our current fiscal year looks like this. The expenses represent a whole array of costs, subscriptions or software licenses, printers and the toner, computers, laptops, phone lines, cellular service. You know, anything you can think up for technology is included in that. And the consultant work for those or maintenance that is performed by companies that we have to outsource to. I'm not equipped to get up on the telephone pole and troubleshoot the fiber connection. So we lean on an outside vendor for something like that. That's captured in these expenses. After Aaron Mark's recommendation, you know, I can certainly give more granular detail about what represents these expense lines. I have it available. I just wasn't prepared to present that granularity, so I apologize for that.
No worries, this is good.
The grants line here is something that I'm real happy about this year. Technology is not in the business typically of generating money. We spend money unfortunately. But when we are able to obtain grants to help put the town in a better position without sacrificing some other effort that we have going on, it's real energizing for us. And so the grants that we have, I think you touched upon one of them, is to upgrade, one of them is about eighty-five thousand, and it's to upgrade our electronic document storage system. And, you know, we get our current system pulled forward to as current as there is and we also get an indirect benefit of greater integration with some of our other solutions. So that's a huge win for us and for the town as a whole. Another grant that we were awarded was to enhance and expand our fiber network, something considered like a municipal area network, which is fiber connecting buildings or key sites in town. And, you know, not only will we be able to add additional resources to our infrastructure, but it will come with added redundancy and it will, you know, we'll now be leveraging a resource that the town owns rather than something that we're paying an outside vendor for. So a public safety radio system, moving an antenna or two to this fiber network as a result of the grant is just a huge benefit for where I sit and for the town. So I'm real excited about that and it's actually, the work is wrapping up now on that one. It has yet to start on the electronic document storage. And then we also were awarded a state-run cybersecurity program grant and I don't have a value for that, but people here are participating and it can be a little frustrating being told what to click on and what not to click on and being tested, but people are real cooperative and they do the training. So it's helpful for me in keeping us up and running. So I'm appreciative to all the departments that support that. And these grants, I'd love to take credit for it, but it's really an example of cooperation across all the departments for the fiber and the document storage, police, fire, engineering, the town clerk, town manager. It's, you know, the success for these grants being awarded is small for technology as far as credit. It's really just everybody working together, so. And then I have the capital put up here. Capital varies from year to year. Apparently, we're doing a GIS Planometrics Project with a decent chunk of this capital. Planometrics Project is the only thing I'm not feeling questions on tonight because I'm just not able to answer. I totally rely on our GIS person for GIS-related questions. I just, after so many years working with it, it just doesn't sink in for me, so it's a blind spot. But and the remainder of the capital is network hardware, storage, capital device, capital type items. So for the proposed FY twenty-four budget, you know, we have salaries and expenses that look like this. And, you know, Mark, this is probably more appropriate for this. that look like this and, you know, market, this is probably more appropriate for this type of, uh, um, information to be communicated. Um, this is a comparison of twenty-three to twenty-four and a percent change. And although the slide might be nice, uh, the content on the slide probably isn't as nice as Matt's, uh, there is a, not a negative change, but a positive change, like the prices are going up. So, much like everything these days, we are looking to provide the same services, but the cost to do that is increasing. Uh, I do have this broken out by account number, um, you know, category, account category, but not prepared to show that granular detail here tonight. Um, it is something that I, I have possession of though. It's not just, these are specific numbers and some estimates in cases where vendors don't have specifics, but pretty much looking at past trends should be accurate. Um, the changes in the salary are the result of the pain class study and, um, and in the fact that we've sort of detached from administrative services and, and, um, and become our own departments, uh, is nice because it captures what it was that technology was really costing that, I guess. And so, um, you know, just to sum up, our goal is to make the other town departments achieve their goals and, um, we try to do this without sacrificing the security of our data or our systems and we try to, to keep an eye on where technology is headed and we, we're never really guilty of being on the bleeding edge or the, you know, but we do try to be as current as possible and we've just received so much support, um, from our management team with, you know, for the entire twenty years I've been here and, and, uh, it's, it used to feel like I was trying to push the town into rolling out, um, better technology and the opposite is the case now for the past probably eighteen years. It's trying to keep up with requests, uh, but each of the departments is real eager to, um, make their, their, make their, uh, departments perform more effectively and, and technology is typically something that's involved, so it's a challenge keeping up with the requests. Um, and I do have, you know, I have a slide about questions, um, but before I, before I got to that, um, I know that there have been some requests in recent weeks to improve the in-room sound amplification for the select boardroom. And we do have a larger effort to revamp the equipment in the select boardroom, um, but we're gonna address that in-room amplification, uh, in advance. And, um, my hope is to have a solution by, uh, end of February and it might not be ideal, but, um, and I'm hopeful much sooner than end of February too, just so that's clear. I just, I rely on some, um, supply chain and vendor support, uh, so I, I can't, I can't totally commit to, uh, to January, but I, I'd be hopeful it was. And, um, one other thing, uh, there is an on-air light in your room now and, uh, that probably deserves a little bit of explanation. Uh, when it is, when it is illuminated, it is indicating that the equipment to broadcast is, uh, and is powered on. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that you are being broadcast at that time. So, um, I know the group that's in the select boardroom now, especially if you were to have executive session, um, might be real curious about that light. So it does not indicate that it's broadcasting, but rather that the equipment to broadcast is live, so. Um, sorry to hijack the end of my time for a couple of technology updates, but I don't typically get this kind of audience, so.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, so, um, just a, a couple of quick things. One, um, for my kids, I have about a twenty-year-old karaoke machine that I'd be willing to offer if you think that'll help with the amplification system, so we can work on that. Maybe that'll help us before February, but we can talk.
Yeah, that's exactly what, you know, if I don't feel that the, um, it's moving quick enough with the vendor, um, that, that's where, that's where we'll be, to be perfectly honest. I'll be, I'll be buying some things and, and doing a homegrown solution. And, you know, in a similar way, it's very much like the hybrid equipment in the select boardroom right now for these Zoom meetings and in the, in the other rooms. We had to make a, um, we had to get a solution in place at a time where vendors were not, uh, available to us. They were, they were busy with bigger fish and, um, so we had to buy things off the shelf and come up with a solution on our own, so. Um, it's very comparable to that. Push comes to shove and I'll be over your house gathering up your karaoke equipment from your crying kids, so.
I, I got some CDs to go with it too. Board members' questions.
Above my pink ring. Good.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, thanks, Kevin. Um, I, I, in, in reference to your open position that you currently have, I, I did apply ten to fifteen years ago and, and I was denied the, the job unfortunately, so, um, maybe I have my resume still on record. You can, uh, give me a call back if you do.
If you're still interested, the job is sincere, I just don't think.
I think some people would be happy if I took that position, Kevin.
I think, yeah.
In terms of, um, like Office three sixty-five migration, I know we're still using Exchange twenty-ten, which was end of life a couple of years ago. When is the plan to get us fully cut over?
Okay, well, the plan was this past summer. Um, we've had a tremendously difficult time getting our Microsoft tenant so that it was a government tenant and, you know, um, just last month after, you know, it was between June and last month that we wrestled with getting a government tenant, but we just got it and we got our existing users that were in the pilot group migrated over to our net, our new tenant. And then the invoice was sent to R M L D. And so there's clearly additional confusion over our account. Um, I'm, I'm more eager than anybody because like you're saying, we're on borrowed time with our existing solutions, so, um, but I've, I've been given assurances from the vendor that resells our licensing that's been handling it, uh, that we are, we are good right now. And so my next step is to engage the consultant that is handling the, um, um, exchange-to-exchange online migration, uh, before the Christmas, um, holiday and then start that. And my guess is that it would be about a month and a half migration from beginning to end, uh, so we just now need to get on their schedule now.
And will our email addresses be changing or what was, is that happening?
Well, a lot of people do like the C I dot Reading dot M A dot U S, but.
Say so.
We will, we will be continuing to support, support that domain, but in addition, the primary domain will be Reading M A dot gov. We own it, we have DNS set up for it. Every, all the pieces are in place, we're just, we really have just been, you, you hit a, you hit a sore spot with the mentioning the Microsoft tenant, because it has been a struggle for me, um, but it looks like it's, we're on the other side of it now.
And, and they just raised all the rates anyway, like ten to twenty percent, so it's, it's even better for you.
Yeah, and, you know, to speak to what Mark had asked about, um, part of our, our increase is due to that, um, uh, you know, for next year, for our next fiscal year, our subscription increases just like what you're mentioning, so. But it's across the board, it's not just Microsoft.
And then in terms of the fiber, obviously, um, getting grant money for that, you know, is a no-brainer, just spending things like that. I'm somewhat biased because all I do is wireless essentially, so I could link here to the fire station up on a gig connection for like five thousand dollars for you. And, and, you know, you spent five thousand dollars about two hours ago. So, um, I guess, long story short, is just don't, um, omit wireless for any plans in the future if there are links that have to get done or redundancy, like you mentioned. Um, I mean, it's, it's definitely a, a night and day difference compared to where it was years ago in terms of speed, latency, everything, so.
Yeah, so just to steal a few seconds of time for that, um, when I started here, we had a point-to-point wireless connection with the D P W garage in the town hall and the only time they needed it was during a storm, to get, you know, updated weather information and, uh, or just internet access and, and, um, that's precisely what would knock out the point-to-point wireless. And so the fiber was put in during a time when wireless wasn't as reliable. Um, but since then, the, the fiber networks really, um, have fleshed out and all of our buildings are connected in a diverse way, a redundant way, um, with automatic failover and, um, you know, uh, and gig connection in either direction and, and we've added to it sewers, substations and, um, water stations. And so I guess my point is we, you know, looking at today's technology, you're right, we probably would have been, um, comparably served and probably more financially responsible. But looking at the resource that we have now and, um, you know, the fact that it costs us nothing to leverage it whenever, um, you know, we have an additional service needed at any one of the sites that's already on the link, um, is, is, uh, if I had to switch direction at this point, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And, um, you gotta put some budget money to get a bigger monitor, because I would've thought you would've had like a thirty-two inch in your office.
Oh, no, actually I go out of my way to make sure that my technology is not any better than anybody else's, mainly selfishly so that it keeps the requests in line.
I don't, it's, I don't, something's gonna be done about that monitor. But thank you, I, I appreciate all the work you do for the town and, and your longevity here, et cetera, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Um, nope, I'll just say publicly that, um, you guys did an amazing job with the owl system, getting that in. Um, our good friends at R M L D still don't have like an operational system and so, you know, maybe you can help them, but, um, anyway, I just wanted to say kudos because I, I saw an other equivalently sized organizations and inability to really get something up online and, and you guys got that, you got us up running quickly when we decided to do it, so, and it's been great. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Karen. I, I said at the time to Bob, I didn't know it was an option, so, uh, it was more because I thought it was a necessity to do, so, uh, my mistake, I'm, I'm moving forward.
All right, so I think we'll, we'll roll, oh, sorry, I'm gonna check in.
No, just one more comment, I guess. Um, I know from covering, um, the broadband grants, um, in my day job, that there's, um, a good, a lot of opportunity for, um, broadband projects to be funded when they involve municipal light plant or an electric co-op. And I know that oftentimes those grants that involve a lot of work by staff that they could be, that they need to be, you know, doing, um, spending, doing other things makes it, you know, you always have to assess whether it's worthwhile to apply, but, um, it is maybe something we can think about with R M L D, as those are, um, unrolled, rolled out, um, to the state level like mid-next year. So.
Okay, well, that's, that's great to, to know about and our vacant computer technician actually, um, is vacant because we had one of our employees go to R M L D, so we did have a, a path of communication available to it.
Yes, that's, I mean, that's really great, actually.
Maybe you can get Greg Phipps to buy you lunch on account of that. All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Let me just, we take just a quick five-minute recess and then we'll come back and start with F A R. All right, so we'll take a five-minute recess. Call the board back to order. Next on the list, Chief Burns, please.
Thanks, Caleb.
Thank you, Caitlin. I also want to say congratulations to Jean Delios, she's been a great partner over the years and we're going to miss her. So my name is Greg Burns, I'm fire chief for the town and I'm with Tony Delsey-Moori, the assistant fire chief. Thanks for having us here tonight. The fire departments FY twenty-four budget, we're responsible for four major functions, emergency medical services, fire suppression, fire prevention, and also emergency management. Our mission is to be an innovative department that's committed to providing the highest levels of publicity for services to the residents and visitors of our community. We protect lives, property, and environment by providing high-quality professional emergency services, emergency medical care, fire suppression, fire prevention, emergency management, and public education. Our, our goal is to continually evolve and improve the level and quality of services we provide and to increase public safety through prevention, public education, professional development, and planning. And our hope is by functioning as a compassionate professional team who will respond to all emergencies and provide positive outcomes that return you to your family and home and our firefighters to theirs. So the, the, the budget, we're, look, we're presenting a level service budget, same number of FTEs, we're not changing anything, we're adding, adding new people. Of our fifty-one uniformed personnel, forty-eight are, are assigned to providing emergency services. Each, each one of those forty-eight personnel, they're assigned to one of four groups. Each group has a captain, a lieutenant, and then ten firefighters. And administrative duties are done by the fire chief, assistant fire chief, our fire prevention captain, and our administrative assistant. We also have a halftime position that maintains a municipal fire alarm system. Each day, we staff two fire engines, a ladder truck, and an ambulance, and we staff two fire stations. We have a minimum staffing level of ten. We count our fire prevention officers part of that, that number. Next slide, please. Our budget highlights are for our total salaries, we were requesting a four-point-two percent increase, and for expenses, it's actually a reduction of two-point-nine percent. So the total requested increase is three-point-eight-nine percent. So the budget highlights, the salary increases are per the pay and classification plan. The union salary highlights, we're a young department now, with the exception of Tony and myself.
Sorry. Even the governor knows, right? Or, sorry, the general.
So we have two captains that are going through the staffing process, we have three lieutenants that are receiving a step increase, and we have sixteen firefighters that are receiving a step increase. So we've got a lot of people moving through that, that's probably the, the drivers of the budget as well. And just a small increase to overtime of thirty-five hundred dollars. And then the expenses are down point-three percent. There's an increase to our stipend we pay to our medical director, is a physician, Dr. Walker from Melrose Wakefield Hospital. He does a fantastic job for us. We pay him a minuscule amount of money, but we, we have to increase that. It's been, it's been flat since we've been at the ALS level and we're still getting a, a bargain. He comes in and does classes with us, reviews our medical charts on, on high-acuity patients and talks with those, with our, with our firefighters. It's, it's really an amazing thing to see and I really enjoyed participating in those, those trainings. Last fiscal year, we needed to outfit three new personnel in full captive equipment. This year it's two, so that's one of the reasons why we're seeing reductions in this, in this area. Next slide, on fire suppression, we provide fire protection and emergency response services to our residents to minimize property loss and reduce injuries and fatalities. So our partial year data, I compiled these statistics towards the end of November. Our, our total responses are trending upward of just under five-five percent. So when I compared this, the, the same period this calendar year to last calendar year, we were about four-point-eight percent when we were up. So our, our total emergency responses, you know, mid-to-later November was three-thousand-eight-ninety-five and eighteen-hundred-and-forty of them were non-EMS responses. We have fifty-four fires that we reported to the state fire marshal's office and twenty-eight fires that, that met the criteria in our national incident fire reporting system to be reported to the state fire marshal's office. We have three more serious fires in, in town so, so far this, this year. Next slide, please. Emergency medical, we provide emergency medical care and treatment to residents and visitors of Reading that will improve, resolve, or stabilize their condition. So by the same time period, we had two-thousand-fifty-five EMS responses. Our system is robust. I, I say it's robust because, see down the bottom of that slide, you see three fire trucks and an ambulance. All of those vehicles are registered as ambulances, they all carry full ALS supplies, they all carry medications. So if our ambulance is at a hospital taking care of a patient, we get to that second medical call, which happens all the time, we can start providing ALS-level care right away while we wait for a neutral aid ambulance or, or REMs to come back from the hospital. So it gives us a, a, a level of redundancy that's really critical as we see our emergency responses rise. Putting ALS equipment on fire trucks, nobody else is doing that in this area. I did hear of one community in the South Shore that does it, but they just put it on one of their trucks. We put it on everything. And our latest fire engines, two of our latest fire engines and our new ladder truck have a temperature control compartment to maintain the medications at the, at the proper temperature, you know, throughout the year. Next slide, please. This is an interesting, I was going through data on our responses while preparing this presentation, and in our emergency medical reporting system, there was, there's, there's a lot of different reports, canned reports, because this, this system is used all over the country. And one of them was the, this, this information here, it's called a Usteen report. They look at return of spontaneous circulation in patients with cardiac arrest, and they look at it in three areas. One of cardiac arrest that was witnessed by a bystander. The second category is cardiac arrest that was witnessed by a nine-one, nine-one-one responder. And the third was a return of spontaneous circulation, you know, this is all after treatment of cardiac arrest patient that, where the cardiac arrest was unwitnessed. So the, the data is interesting, so the, the, the ones that were witnessed, a hundred percent of those, both of those patients had return of spontaneous circulation from, from the treatment while they arrived at the hospital. And then the ones that were unwitnessed, because we don't know how long that they were cardiac function, one-third of those patients at, at the hospital had that return of spontaneous circulation. So it really shows how kind of strong our EMS system is and that we're able to give people, you know, a fighting chance in whether they're going to, they're going to be able to survive. Now, this kind of data will fluctuate year to year because you, because the patients fluctuate year to year, their medical conditions and things like that. The, the other thing is that we, I, I don't have data on how many people that had return of spontaneous circulation were able to walk out of the hospital. I, I do know one of the witness arrests did walk out of the hospital and had a full recovery. So, but it, it is interesting data to, to see that and it's, so I, I thought I would share that with the board. The next slide, please. This is a slide showing the medications given, it's kind of hard to, to see all of them, but it's, it's just a wide variety of medications that are carried on, on the fire trucks, so it's delivered in, in the patient's home, so it's a, it's, it's a, it's a great service for the community. And many of those medications are given because of cardiac arrest, because of difficulty breathing, because it's a diabetic emergency or a drug overdose or seizure.
Can I ask, what's the second one, Mr. Chair? Odenestron, what's that?
You're asking me?
Well, I'm addressing the chair, but.
So that, that medication is, I'm going to pronounce it incorrectly.
Me too, I already did.
Odenestron, it's, it's, the other name for Zofran is, it's for nausea.
Oh.
So many of our patients for, that are treated for a wide variety of things, they give this so, so they don't vomit.
Okay. Interesting, I, I just never seen it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Greg, while we're here, can I just ask on the, on the overdoses on the alloxone, how was that number compared to the past?
I looked at it, I, I just can't, I, I, I don't.
When you can't, I just, yeah, I'd be interested to just see how, how that's going.
I can get that to you, since we do keep, we do keep data on the, the amount of patients, the amount of doses that we give. Next slide, please. Fire prevention, that's achieved through specialized inspections, testing, and consultation services to residents, business owners, and industry professionals, so we all live and work in a safe community. Partial year, we did nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven inspections and collected just over eighteen-thousand in revenue. With new construction, you know, the, the fire prevention begins with the development review team meeting, looking at the site plan, and then it progresses to looking at the working drawings for building a new building, and then it's multiple inspections as it's, as it's being done, the, the rough-in inspections and then the final inspection. So it's, for, for a new building, it's, it's multiple inspections to make sure the systems are there, they're installed properly in the run conflicts. Fire education, community fire education provides risk reduction programs to the community of Reading designed to prevent, better prepare our residents for emergencies. We have two big programs, the SAFE program and Senior SAFE program. Our SAFE program features firefighters visiting the elementary school in grades K through, through second grade. We use the MetroFire SAFE trailer that, that we house and take care of in Reading, and it's a great learning tool for the, for the children. We can teach a wide variety of safe skills, crawl along smoke, touch that door before you go out into the hallway, how to climb out a window and, and things like, like that. Our SAFE program's overseen by Lieutenant Ryan Buckley. And then we have our Senior SAFE program, and that's geared to our elderly residents, and that's overseen by Lieutenant Paul Dalton. We deliver that to, to places where, where seniors, you know, tend to gather, the senior center, in prior years we've gone to clubs that, that seniors are members. We had a captain that did it before, already went to Wakefield to talk to, to talk to the group, because Reading residents were part of that. And it also, at, at times includes visits to elderly residents' homes to help them with issues that they might have. Emergency management, the, the goal for emergency management is to identify areas of vulnerability to the community and to prepare for all disasters, whether natural or man-made, and to coordinate the response of a wide range of agencies in assisting the recovery phase. This slide shows the setup for a large COVID vaccine that, that we did last in two thousand, in two thousand and twenty-one. And the role of emergency management was to coordinate the event. And, and the event had people from every town department, it really showed the cooperation that, that we had here, now from, from technology that, that supplied us with the computers to operate. The school department given us the venue, nurses and custodial assistants. The facilities department provided us PPE tables, chairs, and setup. The DPW did the scale drawings for us, so we knew we could fit out people and symptoms so that they could go through their recovery phase after, after the vaccine was administered. The, the police department provided the traffic flow plan and security. The health department provided vaccine and a nurse. We had administrative assistance from town, town hall, police, and fire departments. Elder human services provided a nurse. We provided, the fire department provided a number of paramedics to administer the vaccine and when we oversaw the management and coordination of the event. So I, I hope I didn't leave anybody out, but everybody was part of it. It was, so it really shows the strength of the community and, and how it was able to be pulled off so well. Next slide will show some of the grants that we have in progress. We have an eighteen-thousand-dollar FY twenty-twenty-two firefighter equipment grant, that's a state grant. We received it to make repairs to our radio infrastructure. I just, we're going to complete this project next week. We have been waiting months for a piece of radio equipment due to supply chain issues. Our SAFE program, we received a five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar grant to fund that program, and our Senior SAFE, just over three-thousand dollars from the state. We have an application in with the state for a nineteen-thousand-dollar firefighter equipment grant, and we're waiting for word on that. It's a competitive grant and they score it, based upon how you score, depends upon how much you get funded. And so it's, that's for protective clothing, but also for some, some, some tools that, that, that would be helpful for us to have. And the next one is a sixty-five-hundred-dollar federal fiscal year twenty-two emergency management planning grant. I received notification last week that we received this grant. We're going to use half of the grant for emergency shelter supplies. We have a trailer with emergency shelter supplies, pots, blankets, things like that, comfort kits. I looked at our inventory and I want to kind of beef it up a little bit, so we have enough on hand to, to, to take care of a hundred people for a couple of days with towels and just, just things that somebody would need if they're out of their house, so. And then we want to use the remainder of that for incident command training for our fire officers. And one that involved the police in with that, but there's, they're so, they, they have a number of training programs scheduled and they just weren't able to squeeze it in. But it, it fits with what we're doing on the, on what we're trying to accomplish this year, so we'll use half of it for that.
Will you be using the new command center to, to deliver that training, or how do you, how's your incident training work?
We knock enough of that. Technology got us a program. We're, what, what we're, I've had three of our offices attend the National Fire Academy on incident command training, particularly on structure fires in, in, in buildings like we have in town. And they have a, an approach to, to coordinating the scene that's a little different than in the past, there's, there's a lot of commonality, but there's, there's some different assignments. And so with this program that we received from technology, we can simulate a structure fire and then have people in different parts of the building and, and go over with their assignments, our communication. So people are kept track of, assignments are done, so it, it really enhances our safety and coordination, so. But we, we do need to do some training in that new center. It's a beautiful facility.
Where is it? Is it here?
The Emergency Operations Center that the police built is on the second floor of the police station.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, and it has a number of monitors around the room.
Yeah, so what you're talking about is software-based training?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, so you can do it at your own facility?
So the, the cost will be, yeah, in, in, in overtime, and we're going to use existing software that we just received. And it really kind of drives home the lessons that you're trying to do rather than, it's a, it's a great way to simulate.
Okay.
Yes. And then the, the next slide is revenue. So our ambulance revenue is partial data, so it's, it looks down, it will be, you know, probably equal to FY nineteen, if not just a little bit above that. So over the long term, it's, it's going upwards, not, not, you know, at a, at a steady lineup. Ambulance revenue is kind of, kind of tough to predict because you don't know what the patient's treatment is, and that's what drives the, the cost. And you don't know what their insurance is. A lot of our patients, our Medicare, it's kind of a flat rate on, on what you get, so, based upon the level of service. And so. And, so, Medicare patient is, is less than half of what you get from a patient with the same service, um, that has the, um, an insurance program. Uh, FEMA reimbursements, um, with, we have two requests in with FEMA right now. Um, one of them has been, has been paid, uh, that, I wanna say that figure was about eighty-six thousand dollars. I have another, um, uh, request in with them. And this process has been much longer than the other process, it's gone through multi-layers of review. Um, and then they pull stuff out. Uh, but it's, it's four hundred thousand dollars, uh, now. And the way they're pulling stuff out, I, I can't tell you it's gonna be four hundred thousand when it comes out the other end. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful it's, it's a considerable amount of money. It's, you know, the PPE that we spent and all the things that was incurred in our response to COVID. Things that they didn't fund, because sometimes, some of the things we did early and, and they wouldn't start funding them till a particular time, but we did them months early, so it wasn't, it wasn't, so they pulled it out. So that got moved, those expenses got moved over to the CARES funding. So, uh, we didn't lose out on it, we just had to move it into a different pocket. And, 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 uh, the skeptic in me thinks that that was kinda what they were looking to do. But, I really don't know. Um, so I don't know when they're gonna finish that review process. I think we've, we've gone through multiple reviews, it went through a MEMA review, and then it's gone through at least three re- three reviews at FEMA. So I, I think we're at the end of it, when, when they're gonna release, uh, a final check. Uh, the next slide, um, is, uh, future needs. And, um, I mentioned before when I did a presentation in June, where, where I'd like to see the department go is have our shift commander in a car to give that proper flexibility. Right now, they're assigned to an engine company. And when they're assigned, being assigned to an engine company means that you have engine company duties, that, and if, if the captain is in the second fire engine into a fire, and, and it, if it's during the daytime where he could be just himself and a driver, he could be, uh, down the street, um, making the connection to the fire hut. So, you don't wanna have your shift commander down the street making a connection to a fire hut. We wanna have him up in front of the building, coordinating response. It improves safety, it improves supervision, and it enables the officer to focus on the emergency at hand to make sure that he, that the resources that, that, that are on scene are assigned properly. For everybody's safety, for the, for the, for somebody who may be inside, but also for the firefighters as well. Um, and what, what we're seeing is, um, you know, there's communities around us that's been doing it for a long time, Woburn's been doing it for a long time, Stoneham has, Stoneham just started it, um, fairly recently. Uh, Wakefield's been doing it for a number of years, probably around ten years or so. And, um, it gives the, uh, shift officer a lot of flexibility. And I want them to be on scene for certain calls, too. Certain critical calls, I wanna, I want that shift commander on, on scene. And if he's assigned to an engine company, he could have to drive over to the west side of town, perhaps up on, on the highway. All our fire protection now has moved over there, where if that person is in a car, now they have flexibility to, to, to go to that scene without dragging all the fire protection in the community with, with. So, you know, we're seeing, um, uh, increased larger buildings, we're seeing an increase in simultaneous calls. And, like I mentioned before, we're doing that incident command training. Um, how that incident command, uh, system, that structure is put in place, it needs to be different for each one. How that, that's put in place and how early that's put in place will determine how successful that, that incident is. So, um, the, the next slide, so I, I, when, when I presented this in, in June, I didn't have any figures for it, and I didn't have a coherent, um, uh, phasing plan for. So, I, I, I came up, I developed a, um, four-phase staffing, uh, four-phase, uh, plan for. First three phases could be done, uh, relatively easy, easier. And the, uh, fourth phase is a long-term, it's not something that, you know, it's, it's a longer-term phase. So the, uh, the phase, phase one would, would have no staffing changes. We would, would have that person in a car, um, on an intermittent basis. We would depend upon our staffing level. And we'd need to purchase a vehicle and proper equipment, because we need to have a computer inside that vehicle, we need to have command board, we need to have communications equipment. Um, so it would have to be set up properly. Um, the second phase would be the, uh, promotion of, uh, four firefighters to lieutenants. Those people would replace the captain on the engine. So now that engine has supervision, and it also provides the, the, uh, command structure for inside a building on, 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 that may be on fire or the emergency scene. So, it gives us, um, it gives us supervision on the west side of town, but it gives supervision for, um, uh, smaller incidents, uh, on this, on this side of town. And the flexibility of that captain to go to the, to the scene. So, that first year cost would be sixty thousand dollars for the, for the promotion, but it would give us the management structure we need. So that would be the, the really key thing to move forward is to have that management structure. Uh, the, the third phase would be, um, to stop counting the, uh, fire prevention captain as shift strength. That cost would be about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. But the benefit would be that that captain would always be in a car. We wouldn't be taking the person out of the car and placing them on the fire engine. So, to me, uh, phase two and phase, getting to phase two and phase three is, would be the success of the operation. That's where I'd like to see us go. Phase four could be, uh, a number of years down the road as the community continues to grow, but it's not critical to, to this program. You know, the, the phase two and the phase three is more, more critical together. Okay, and, thank you. Question?
Fire, Karen.
Thanks, thank, thank you.
I think you said a term, I don't know why.
So basically on that last slide is, in, in a perfect world, phase two and phase three would be next year?
Well, it would be dependent on funding.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in a perfect world, yeah.
Yeah, I kinda look at it as those phases could be done, um, in fiscal years. You know, the, if, if the board says, yes, this is the way we wanna go, at a particular fiscal year, we could start phase one at any ti- I wouldn't wanna start phase one until we had a commitment that we were gonna go to phase two, because it would just be, uh, so sporadic. Um, but, if we could get a commitment at a, at a later date for, um, you know, as, as part of the budget process that, you know, this fiscal year we could go to phase two, then we could start, I would start the, the, the phase one for that.
Okay.
And then, uh, and in another fiscal year, we could go to the phase three.
As far as the grant, uh, slide, how's that compare with previous years?
Uh.
Comparable?
Yes, yes, comparable. We just finished, um, three FEMA grants. We received over, um, six hundred and fifty thousand for a safer grant for personnel. Um, and then we received, um, a grant to purchase, um, washer, uh, washer extractor for each fire station and a gear drive for each fire station, I just closed those grants out. Those were done in the previous fiscal year. And then we received, um, a, a grant, um, for, to up, to outfit both of our ambulances with stretchers that automatically load the patient into the back.
As opposed to, yeah.
So, tho- those were done, uh, during COVID. And, um, but those grant, I just closed those out last week. We've, we've purchased the equipment, we've installed the equipment, and it's all working well. It really helped our operation on a number of fronts, because people are getting bigger and so it's much, prevents injuries if, if it can, if you can, we used to have to, you know, tech up and, you know, so, you back injuries and things, so it's.
And last question is, is the ladder truck? Have it?
It's on order.
On order.
And the, the delivery date was, you know, was
I'm sure.
five hundred and fifty days out from when we done the.
Wow, wow.
So, we're about, we're about a year out.
Wow. Alright.
And, and that's similar to, like, all the manufacturers or like that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we're still going through the process with the, with, with an ambulance, we have a, an ambulance on order. And, um, we're purchasing that ambulance on a, um, as, uh, MAPC bid price. And we can't get pricing on chassis, because it doesn't been released from, you know, we're gonna buy a commercial chassis, like a pickup truck chassis.
Right, yeah.
Uh, the, well, the, the ambulance company's gonna, the, the vendor's gonna do that.
Right.
And they can't get pricing on, on the chassis. It's, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's very difficult to, to, to get things, um, the last few, you know, with the costs, right? And, and the prices have gone absolutely crazy.
That's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, uh, and thank you, Chief. Um, you mentioned that, um, I know you said it before and this time around, that, um, all our fire trucks have all the, the same equipment as an ambulance, et cetera. Why are other cities and towns still not doing that?
I think it comes down to cost, there's some cost involved in it. You know, um, the defibrillator monitor that you have to have has considerable cost, you know, it's probably about eighteen thousand dollars to put that on there. Um, you know, the, the medication has cost, and now everything has an expiration date, so if you don't use it, you have to rotate it. And, and in order to get that license, you have to carry the, um, specific selection of medications and amounts. So, the, the ambulance inspector will come out and look at our drug logs and make sure that we have the proper policies and things like that. So it, it comes right down to cost. But, but for, for us, I look at, you know, I look at it as, it's, it's money well spent, because we have the people that have the training and they can do it. And for, there is a cost involved, but we're spreading it over multiple years. When you, when you look at it over, you know, um, like an eight-year period, the cost isn't as prohibitive. It's just harder to start than, than to keep it going. And, you know, the level of service is just.
No, that's, that's, that's the point that I'm trying to make, I'm just wondering why nobody else is just doing it. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing it, I'm just saying that with, the same thing with the senior circuit breaker and all that, eventually now everyone is doing it, I'm just wondering like, what's the deal? Like, why doesn't anyone wanna just be this proactive and just, I understand it's money, but like, what prevents wearham or Gloucester from just doing it?
Yeah. Some departments don't do the EMS, and then some, some departments aren't at the advanced life support level. So they have, they, they have, uh, basic life support, uh, done. And so they, they won't have the medications, they won't have the defibrillator monitor. They'll, they'll have a, they'll have an ADD, an automatic external defibrillator. And, um, they'll have an oxygen bag, they might have suction, and then they'll have blood pressure costs and things like that. A lot of very wide, uh, medication choice.
And then my other question is, um, uh, I read your weekly emails, surprisingly, I actually like the, the layout that you do. Um, but, um, I, I noticed one of them was the lithium ion battery fires on the rise, et cetera. Can you just go into more detail with that? Is that solar, EVs, both, like?
It's, the lithium batteries, um, it doesn't matter whether they're in, uh, a scooter or, um, or if they're a storage for a, um, solar array. If they become damaged, they're, they're prone to a thermal runaway. And, um, once that happens, it happens very quickly with, with lots of heat. And, um, so it's, it's, the lithium batteries, we've seen tremendous, uh, ability in, you know, retaining that charge and, and being able to be use- useful. But, the technology's moving pretty fast. And, there, we're seeing, um, in, in other communities, uh, home storage of them. And, and the building codes and things just haven't quite caught up to them yet. I think the next, uh, round of building and, and fire prevention codes that are gonna come out after the first of the year will kind of, uh, address some of it. But, once they meet a certain threshold, they have to be rated rooms and things like that. But New York City has a real problem with it, with scooters and things like that. There might be batteries that were purchased, um, that weren't made to UL standards, and then, uh, they get overcharged, and then they, and then a thermal runaway happens.
So has there been any incidents in Reading at all? Like, any fires that you put, put out on someone's house that had solar that's an issue, or?
Not, no, we haven't seen any lithium guys, we've had car fires. Um, and we've had car fires with, um, uh, many years ago, I, I responded to one on, on a, um, uh, EV vehicle many years ago. Um, that was a hybrid. But, the, the training is now for a car fire with, with a big, um, package of lithium ion batteries is to, is to let it go, because there's, there's, there's not enough water capacity to put it out. So, the best thing is just to let it burn out, because you can, sometimes you can get it out, but it's, it's subject to reignite. And they say if, if, to, to take it to an area remote from everything, you know, to, to, to the tow yard, but don't have it next to anything, because it's, it's liable to reignite. It's something that we'll, we'll definitely be seeing as we see more and more EVs.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Chief. I, I think the only thing I thought of, um, during your presentation to mention is that perhaps, um, an email to our congressional delegation might help shake loose that FEMA grant, or at least the status on it. Yeah.
Yeah, on the reimbursement?
Yeah, reimbursement, yeah, just to, yeah, sometimes that helps.
I think, one of the things that's happened is, they've had to bring in consultants to deal
Yeah.
because it's every city in town throughout the entire country.
Yeah.
So I don't know how they deal with that influx, because everybody's got a.
Sure.
And we had two projects in, so I'm sure other communities have multiple, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Great, um, just making sure Jason, all the FEMA grants, it's going on for a while. Um, when, when Greg finally gets that money, does he get to keep it? Or does it go into the slush fund? I'm just wondering how these things work, because that's like.
Fifty, fifty-fifty is what I heard.
Because, if this is PP, PPE from like years ago, at this point, like, like, I was just curious. Alright, we'll figure that out when you get it.
So, what, what, what happens, so, we have, once it's gone beyond the fiscal year like that, that, like you mentioned, that was prior fiscal year, it goes back to the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I never get to keep any of them.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you.
Unless you wanna change it.
No, oh, I'm asking the question, so thank you for chasing it down anyway, knowing that you have to just, but thank you for getting it for the community. And then, um, so again, I think, I don't know if it was just last year or last summer, when I hear about all this advanced life support, when I hear we have four, um, ho- uh, ambulances, and when I hear we're paying a medical doctor, I keep thinking of the hospital trust fund, and he's really persuasive. How about, we have Greg come up with a grant application, and he accompanies you, and whoever else shows up to the commissioner of the trust funds, and we try, that, that funny, money should not be sitting there. Like, it's just silly.
Interesting ideas, I think that, uh, the likelihood of having a hospital per se in town is not very high.
Right. Okay, so maybe in the new year, we could, we could talk to them, we could work on it fine, if we didn't get to do it this year. It's just silly. But, um, okay, so you're, you, and my, the world has changed. I agree with Mark's assessment of our, the possibility of us having a hospital is like low. But instead, you're doing different things, we have a mobile hospital now. Okay, I'll leave it there. Okay, thank you, keep up the great work on the grant, I appreciate it, grants.
Couple of questions before you go, sorry. So, uh, first, uh, thanks again for all your hard work on incident command leadership, that's, I mean, new training coming is great, but you were, you were the rock, so I wanna thank you again for that. Um, following up on Karen's point, so when, um, we've applied for budget, CARES funding reimbursement, same deal with that, whenever that comes in, we, we've spent the money, so that's been in budget. Anything else that comes in as kind of reimbursing general funds? Is that how it'll go?
So the, the cares fund, my understanding is that, that, that we receive X amount of dollars.
Care is, is, is already done.
Oh, we already got all the money? Just got it, okay, so now it's just a re, okay, great, so skip that.
We had all the insurance too.
Great, okay. Third question, um, my usual one. When did we last review our fees? And are they appropriate for different things? Whether it's ambulance or inspections or are those where they should be? And I, I don't remember the last time we looked at them.
Our fees are low. They, they, they should be reviewed. And I, I talked to it, I talked about it before and in, in, what, what they want to do is uh, look at all of our fees at once, not just do it in a piece meal. But our ambulance fees are, are on the low side.
Yeah, maybe we should talk about whether or not we have to do everything all at once or, or by group.
Some communities are very high.
Yeah.
Very, so you almost have to kind of decide where you want to be. But you don't know until you see the way the power shake out to the other communities.
Right, well, if a lot of them turn out to be Medicare and it almost doesn't matter, right? Cause it's fixed.
It is.
Then probably being low is not a great advantage, especially where most, where most people have insurance or mass health or Medicare.
Uh, sometimes what we see is, is people very high deductibles now because insurance cost is so high. And so they might have a thousand, several thousand dollars of deductibles in that year. So that means that they have to pay that entire, they have to pay that entire bill.
I mentioned the E R probably eats into that pretty fast.
Yes.
Once you're in the E R. Yep. And then fourth question, back to, to Carlos' point and thinking about this phasing. So um, the ongoing costs here are, you know, pretty substantial to make the change. You know, seven or eight percent of the, of the budget probably, um, as a kind of a bump to get there. And you mentioned, you know, the goal would be to kind of get a, a commitment from the community to do it. And then phase it in, but to do one piece at a time kind of doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, we could do phase two. Phase two would get us in operation. It doesn't have to include phase three. Phase, phase three would get us in a good solid place. But phase two would be um, would get us in a, would get us in a very good place and really enhance the operation. So, yeah.
So maybe that's, that's an interesting, and, and so two and, two plus a vehicle? So one and two, basically?
Yeah, we would need a vehi, we would need a vehicle and then, and then to get to phase two to really make, to really make it work properly. You know, there, there would be some shortcomings, you know, um, but you know, we could, we could work around them. The, the, the phase three would have that captain always in the car, that's the benefit to that.
Do you think that there's any potential state funding that might help?
Not an ongoing, not something ongoing.
How about for a vehicle?
It's for the trust fund to pay for a vehicle.
FEMA, FEMA is very definitely, since the fire program, vehicles are very hard.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I thought that would be, okay, got it. So I'm in the right direction, okay.
Some grants, generally, a, a lot of the grants don't, don't say no vehicles.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can, but that's generally kind of a, a
Yeah.
a high bar.
One other question is um, equipment. So I know obviously when you have a new firefighter, there's new equipment. What about for existing firefighters? You know, how often do we update? Is that, that's part of kind of the regular budget process already?
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't need capital plan. And we have a really good system on that. So every five years, we, we issue them uh, new turnout coat, new, new turnout pants and boots. And the gloves, they, they get replaced a lot of times on an ongoing basis. But as part of that five-year period, I issue them the gloves too and uh, and another, and another hood. And so when they come back from a fire, they're required to wash their gear and shower to get those products combustion off. So by having, in, the gear, um, by, by the NFPA standard on, on gear, it's only supposed to be used for ten years. So by going in five-year increments, their, their, um, yeah, their, their older gear as well is, is within the range. And so they can just transfer the stuff into that, so they're ready to go. And then we bought very, we bought some larger um, washer extractors to, to wash the gear. So we can do multiple sets at a time.
Yep.
So that, that works for us.
Sorry, one other, um, it feels like we've had more substantial fires the last few years.
Yeah.
Is that true?
We've had some, we've had, we've had some uh, big fires, you know, we've had some big fires, you know. And, and that's why, you know, we're focusing on the incident command system because that's just the key to a safe operation. And when we go multiple alarms, we're bringing in lots of people. And um, I think when, when we did fifty-two schoolhouse, um, we were at six alarms. We, we had well over a hundred fire pilots there. So if you don't have a good structure, it's, we've got to keep track of them. And, and not only have to keep track of them, you have to take care of them too. You have to feed them, water, you know, get them water, get them rest, so. And um, we had a fire uh, um, on the post office square building on the very hot day. It looked like on our arrival that we had a woman contacts fire. Fortunately, it was on the um, on the deck, on the exterior. But we needed three alarms to, to evacuate her and, and to get the hose lines up to that building, up, up those four floors. It's, it's very labor intensive to do that. So you need, you need a supervisor on the fire floor. You need, you need a supervisor that's in, that's in charge of the evacuation on the floors as you're evacuating. You need somebody in overall command of the operation and a safety person. So there's just a lot that goes on. And then if it becomes a much bigger building, you have supervisors on, on the exterior side of the building. So there's a lot to be put in place. That's one of the reasons why we're working so hard um, to, to, to bring everybody to a very high level.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Very much.
Can I, can I have one thing? Did you want to, um, I was just curious why you didn't put a vehicle cost in here, like for the next phase or for this phase?
Oh.
Did you want to do that?
Yeah, the, the, the cost, um, they're crazy now for, it'd probably be about sixty-five to seventy thousand for a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
That, that would be, but I didn't
I think KCom's gonna ask and like, so.
Yeah, I didn't put it in because it was a capital, uh, capital expense and it comes out of a different thing.
Okay.
This, this would, I, I kind of wanted to get the salary figures.
Yep, okay.
Cause that's more reoccurring.
Okay.
That cost, but yeah, and we, we would have to hash it out. It would either be a pickup truck or an S U V, which is
Then it'd be S, and it's gonna be like hybrid at least, right?
Yeah, perhaps it could be. But it has to be on availability because right, right now the availability, they just, you just can't put your hands on.
I hate to invest in another ten years more gas engines. Okay, alright, I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Mary Ann, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
No. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
David?
Play next.
You're up.
Alright, hi, everybody. I have Deputy Chris Amadola with me somewhere in Zoom, I really can't see her right now, but I think she's out there in Zoom land.
Hi, Chris.
So I try to share my screen.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so for the police department, we do have three budgets within the police department. And we have the actual police officers, police side of it. And then we have dispatch and the coalition under us. So the first slide represents all three combined. And for the budget request, I'm looking for it from, for Fiskier twenty-four. It's a increase of four point four one for all three budgets total compared to Fiskier twenty-three. And approximately ninety-five percent of this is spent on personnel. Our road chart is right in front of us. We do have a couple of positions that are open right now. Um, the administrative sergeant will be getting filled in April. We've had some retirements and some promotions. And so until we get those promotions filled, a couple of positions was more crucial, have this supervised on patrol than it was in the um, administrative sergeant's area. But um, we've been slowly tweaking and evaluating our organization chart on that. We are budgeted for forty-six one officers. As of today, I'm currently at full staffing. Um, I do have two police officers coming off of field training and starting actually on a schedule next week. So they'll only count as actual bodies on the shifts. I have one more officer that's on training and we have one, uh, dispatchers on training. But we're currently at full staffing up until January and February. When expect uh, one more retirement in January, two more retirements in February. All three of those are supervisors, so I'm gonna have to promote um, a couple of um, a, a couple supervisors to replace those positions. And get the exam going and get them trained. We do have um, three administrative assistants, one is split part-time between us and the fire departments. And we have a one parking enforcement officer. And we, the regional, the regional animal control officer we went to last year is actually gonna be falling down with the health department on July one. Um, it kind of puts it in line where most of the other animal control offices have fallen under, um, in other agencies. It's, for some reason, it was under the police department for years. It's usually falls under the health and the other agencies, so we're kind of adjusting to that. And I talked to um, the town manager, in a day, everybody's in agreement with it. Um, cause actually any dog bites or anything like that, they actually go to the health department, not to the police department. And the kind of inspection is actually falling to health. So we're kind of going in line with that. And so on July one, the regional animal control officer will be falling down to health. We go seventeen premium crossing guards, school crossing guards, and we have three full-time positions for the Redding Coalition. Um, all the salary lines, meet all contractual agreements and including um, for the non-union people, any um, raises or um, compensation is done with the new pay-in-class study. For expenses, it, it's um, actually only requesting a small amount, but on the police run side, it's, it makes it look like a huge jump, it's not a lot. Um, as everybody knows, prices are rising for um, common things. So we're just looking for an increase in certain areas. And I was already notified that certain dues and memberships are gonna be increasing. Uh, when it has more professional development trainings for the supervisors and command staff. Office supplies are going up and as we train more and more with less than lethal options, so using, reusing the training equipment does get damaged and the cost of replacing that equipment, not the actual um, tools themselves, but the training rounds have gone up in cost. And the other thing I'm adding new in is um, we're adding a new actual line item now. We've had the comfort dogs for close to a year now. I have a, an idea of what they're budgeting for us. We've been relying on donations to um, pay for them and that's not gonna last forever. Um, it's just mostly for food, um, new harnesses. If, if everybody's seen Rusty and Cooper lately, they are continuing to grow, they're growing the harnesses. So it's mostly replacing leashes and harnesses, food. And we are adding in, um, I think at the last update in the summer, I notified you that we're gonna be getting actual police canine, a true canine dog. He's graduating at the end of December from um, one of his schools and he'll be on the road with us. Um, it is covered under grants for three years, but the grant doesn't cover a hundred percent of everything. It does cover retrofit, the cruiser, full profess, all the training and three years worth of food. But any incidentals that come up, so I've asked for the increase of four thousand dollars uh, just so we can have a um, a line for the three dogs. We're gonna be adding on the departments. For community outreach, we remain very active on social media. We currently have um, over eight thousand, uh, close to nine thousand followers on Facebook, Instagram numbers have shot up and um, eleven thousand three hundred on Twitter. Cooper and Rusty have started their own social media presence and combined for this year alone, they both, they have five over three thousand followers on Instagram alone. We ran two, one of them self, the first classes, the RAG classes. We ran a citizen police academy class. Uh, we participated again with the schools, working in and with the schools. And we call the lunchroom takeover, where police officers go in to all the elementary schools and serve lunches to um, all the students. And um, the kids love it, the teachers love it, the officers love doing, they'll have a great time with it. And then after we serve the lunches, we sit down at the table and talk to the kids, answer all sorts of questions. And it's a great way for us to interact with the kids at a very young level. Uh, we did all our annual open house, we had great weather, um, we had enormous crowd for that. Um, well over five hundred plus attended our open house for that day. We had a bunch of fellow R T's coming up with us. We do the basic helmet safety program where we catch kids riding, wearing um, helmet on their bikes or rollerblades or scooters or um, skateboards. They get either an ice, a citation by an officer to go for a s, uh, free slice of ice cream, sorry, free slice of pizza, burnt ice cream. And a bunch of the local businesses participate in that and it's been a great um, tool with us, working with the businesses. We've done multiple coffees with the cop. Uh, we were able to do the seniors dinner again this year, um, thanks to Harros, donating the chicken pies. And we participated in, I didn't even name everything because I didn't want to spend all night doing this, but we did specifically the fall street fair, town day, downtown trick or treat, bunch of trucks, events and national nights outs. So we've been still very active with the community, we do community outreach. It's just a couple photos of um, some of the students. Uh, sorry, some of the pictures we've done with the RAG class, serving lunches and um, giving out the high school citations. Hold on. Trying to get rid of this screen. Sorry, there we go. Police department is broken up into four different divisions, each run by lieutenant. We have a day patrol position run by Lieutenant Silva and night patrol division run by Lieutenant Kevin Brown. We have detective division is run by Lieutenant Detective Richard Body. And our support services division is run by Lieutenant Christopher Jones. Patrol obviously is the uh, face of the police department. They're out there every day with the cruisers, taking basic reports, responding for calls for service. And then any reports go up to the detective division. Detective division has the coalition falls under them and our school resource officers. And support services has our community service officer, our armor, our fleet maintenance person, traffic and safety officer and our parking enforcement officer. And I just want to throw you some stats for some things we've done this year. We, this is, keep in mind, these stats are run up to eleven thirty, so we still have a full month in comparison. And they're compared to all of last year and the year before's stats. But for example, last year, all of last year, we had twenty thousand four hundred and six calls for service. This year, up until eleven thirty, we're already at twenty thousand four hundred and eighteen. So calls for service have gradually gone up, we still have a month to go. Some stats are stats, it's, we kind of adjust to what's going on. As, as we've come out of COVID, we've seen certain numbers drop and other numbers come, other numbers start to rise again. I can't put an explanation on why, but for example, like suspicious persons, it's dramatically up from last year. And so suspicious motor vehicles is dramatically up from last year. But other things like harassing phone calls, emails and threats, and I want to guess, have dropped. So we kind of adapt to the different chain of scenarios and what we have to focus on. Thankfully, domestic disturbances have gone down and continue to go down. Domestic assistance calls are up and fifty-one A's filed for child neglect abuse have on it, have been on an increase. And we've seen a decrease in violation of restraining orders. Um, mental health related calls, as we've come out of COVID, we have seen a dramatic drop off in mental health related calls. We have seen a decrease in calls for the suicide attempts and threats. But unfortunately, December is our, coming into the holidays is when we start to see a rise in those numbers. So I think those numbers unfortunately are gonna go up. We have seen an increase in overdoses for drugs and alcohol. And even though the mental health related calls have dropped, we as police officers have filled up more Section twelve involuntary commitment to a hospital um, than we have over the past couple of years. So we've seen a decrease where we needed to um, have somebody committed to hospital for evaluation. Police department, Section twelve only brings a person to the hospital for treatment. It's up to the um, physicians or the psychologists at the hospital to actually commit the person. But ours forces them to go to hospital to get down treatment, to get sought after. And we've seen a dramatic increase in welfare persons checked, um, with the aging population in Redding. I'm not too surprised if these numbers are starting to go up. Arrests were, as of eleven thirty, were even for last year. I can tell you that, I'm reading the logs for the past week and a half, we've already surpassed the amount of arrests we've had for last year. We've already surpassed, our complaint applications filed for last year and protective custody has gone up. And motor vehicle crashes have um, are on a steady rise. I know we're probably close to almost all the numbers we had for last year in this past week. And we have started to see an increase in calls involving drugs and alcohol again as well. The detectives, their investigations are significantly up. They're doing a lot more investigations. We're still having a, a good amount of um, credit card theft, uh, identity theft. So they've seen a um, increasing investigations on that side. Uh, public records requests, we had one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight all last year. As of eleven thirty, we've already had one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four public records requests. Uh, we've, after the change in the law a few years ago, we've seen a dramatic rise in the public records requests. And that has not changed at all. And those are handled by our, um, the half person that does halftime with us, the police department, us and the fire departments. And one of our administrative assistants helps out with that. We actually have two, like one and a half people working on those because it's somebody that come in. And uh, licensed carriers of firearms applications, it's handled by our armor as well as that other halftime person we have with the fire department. And processing the application takes a significant amount of time. And we've seen an, an increase over the past few years of licensed carry applications coming in. over the past few years of licensed carry applications coming in, and we're right up pace to be even where we were all of last year. Missing persons, this number's a little bit skewed this year. We have seen an increase in missing persons over the next past couple of years. We've seen a dramatic jump this year. House and Middlesex Ave, we have seen some juveniles running away from there, and we've worked with them to work on that, that situation. We've worked hard with the town and the fire departments in that group, but that number isn't alone just there. That's not the significant increase. We have seen an increase over the past few years of missing people, elderly missing people. And that's part of the reason why the deputy chief had worked hard to get us the grant for canine. And the purpose of that canine is actually a tracking dog to help us track the people. If we get a call that the person's missing for an hour, that's a large, large distance that person could have covered in an hour. If it takes us another half an hour, 45 minutes for us to get a dog in, that's now talking closer to two hours. That puts the search area in amazingly great area, homeless and possible to kind of track down. So with having us, our own tracking dog, we can actually cut down that timeframe and start the tracks immediately. And we, like I said, deputy chief worked on the grant for that and it's covered the cost of the training, cost of the officers, director of the car, the bolted vest. And so right now, it's no cost on the taxpayers, and the grant's good for three years with us. So before I jump into dispatch, does anybody have any questions for us as far as the police department, before I turn to dispatch, when we go through dispatch, the coalition and answer questions? Mark, would you prefer?
Why don't we stop at each section? I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Just too quickly. So Karen, you have a question?
I just have a question on the previous slide. Can you give us any insight into, one more, one more back? What category was it? The public records requests?
Yes.
Like, can you give us broad ideas of the categories that those, clearly they've doubled? What kinds of, like, I know Laura's been telling us that now commercial enterprises can leverage our energy and resources to do this. So anyway, could you help us understand how we constitute those 1,924 public records requests?
So the new changes in the law a few years ago now, like law firms, the beginning of every month asks us for all the accident reports for the past 30 days. So they can call people involved in accidents if they're interested in a lawsuit. And under the new law, we have to give them their public records requests. And I mean, if you saw the amount of accidents we have, we already have 400 for the year. If three or four law firms ask us the past 30 days for the public records requests for traffic accidents, we have to process them. We have to go through and redact certain information, any medical information that has to be redacted, social security numbers, dates of birth, anything, certain information has to be redacted, then we can send them off with people. But basically, the beginning of every month, that's what we get from all the law firms, and that's when a significant increase in it.
Is that like, all right, is that like 50? Is that 100? I'm just curious. That's a big number.
I'm probably going to say it's about 200 to 300, Karen.
Oh, oh, 200 to 300 per month.
Yeah, it's, the change in the law actually really impacted. We have people now, we have people walk in, I saw a cruiser down my street, so they file public records requests because they want to find out why our cruiser's at the neighbor's house.
Yeah, that's really, okay.
And we're seeing some of that stuff now too, Karen. So it's really, it's really kind of, it significantly increases the change in the law, and I honestly don't see it stopping anytime soon.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One question if I could. In terms of school-related activities, trainings, and things like that, have things shifted in terms of our approach? I know that we've done a lot of security kinds of things, so is there more training to your force in terms of, you know, how to work with those new systems? Is there still active shooter training activities? I know you can't tell us everything, but I'm just wondering, are there, is there still an emphasis on those activities that are kind of school-oriented protection?
So like the fire department, Greg and I, the old men of the department, so I'm on the 20th year in the department, we, we have such a young agency now, we've actually kind of gone back to going back to the basics of certain large-scale active shooter trainings like we've done with the fire department and the schools and businesses. We're still doing some of that, but we're kind of starting to take a step back to go back to the basics, and we're going to work up those large-scale exercises. But we do still train regularly on those type of environments, but we're also really increased our less than lethal options, de-escalation trainings, movement as a team, and it's just mostly to get the younger officers up to working as a team with us. Because I've lost a lot of, a lot of senior officers over the last few years, so we just kind of moved back to basics, Mark, but we're still working with the schools as far as safety, security, and we're constantly in touch, the school resource officers, the superintendent and I are constantly in touch with anything going on. But it's, we're going back to basics and working our way back up again. If that, can you answer your question? I kind of got off track with it.
No, no, I think that's, I just, because I didn't see it there, I just was wondering kind of how we're managing, and I think that answered it. And I would suspect that with all the new security systems that, that we've been investing in, that should be an enhancement in terms of what's going on anyway, just in terms of the level of security.
Yes, and the facilities has done an amazing job of getting us up there, technology, getting us up there, and all the town buildings, not just the schools. But mostly, it's changing people's attitudes. I don't mean attitude in a bad way, but more of adjusting to the way things are now, understanding that doors have to remain locked. I know it can be sometimes a proper door open to run out to grab something, but getting over, like changing people's perception of what needs to be done and focus on using only one door to come in and out of, using their access cards, not letting people in. So a change in culture, if that is the word I wanted to use, we're still seeing a better change in culture, which is definitely helping with the increase and helping out with security, if that makes sense.
Yep, thank you. Much appreciated.
Mary Ann, awesome.
Mary Ann, please.
Hi, thank you, Chief Clark. Just a follow-up because I want to make sure I understood what you said about the big, the doubling in missing persons. Did I hear you correctly to say that a lot of that was attributable to kids running away from the home on Middlesex? Or did I mishear you?
Some of that, some of that rise, that number, is a result of that, but not all of it. We have seen an increase in actually missing people, missing elderly over the past few years anyway, but that jump up, I think, was from into the 20s, the 50s. Part of that is that new facility on Middlesex, but it's not all the numbers by any means, so it's not the majority.
And just one further thing. So you mentioned that this is one of the reasons we're, is this one of the reasons we're getting a canine tracking dog? Or did you say we were going to get a canine tracking dog anyway?
We always wanted to track a canine dog anyway, when we've seen an increase of elderly missing people, especially from some of the more older race facilities we have, like the Artist Home, the House on Hable Street, Pearl Street, and people living in town with dementia and Alzheimer's. We have seen an increase in people. So we wanted to get a canine dog anyway, and the grant came up, and we saw the increases coming up. We applied for the grant long before the House on Middlesex Ave went in, long before that. So we actually had the grant in, and we got notified back in February that we got awarded it. So it was even before that place was up and running. So that didn't have anything to do with it, but having a tracking dog will help us with that, if that makes sense.
Okay, so just the last question is, so is the tracking dog the main expense at your end that's arising from this kind of doubling in missing persons that we're seeing? Or is it, does it involve staff overtime or anything like that?
So for the, it depends on the call out. If we have an elderly person that's missing and they have Alzheimer's, we put out, and NEMLEC will send their dogs in. So our canine dog will be part of NEMLEC, and he'll be using other communities. But that kind of comes with a fee that we pay to be part of NEMLEC.
Sure.
And those resources, if we have, let's say, a missing person that's endangered, it's winter time, the weather's getting cold, we know that they left the house without shoes on, I can do a full NEMLEC call out and get 200 police officers into writing in a matter of half an hour to an hour to start helping with the search and tracking down. Problem is, if they're already dealing with another agency, then it hurts us sometimes getting the dogs in because every once in a while, we have somebody that's been missing for an hour, and the nearest dog we could get is coming up from Fall River. And that's just, even license sirens, that is quite a drive. So that's why we wanted to have one of the few dogs up on the North Shore, but other towns are starting to get dogs as well in this area, which should help out. But the main part was to have us to have an immediate response on our shift here. And it goes to be used, honestly, if we have a robbery, a bank robbery, a home invasion, we have that person breaking into the cars, we can use our own dog to help track that person down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's roll on to dispatch.
Okay, dispatch. So the Redding Public Safety Dispatch, as you know, the center is based out of the police station, but they do police and fire. They also do our 911 and emergency medical dispatch. So basically, what it is, is as a call comes in on 911, it's a medical call, while they're dispatching out the fire apparatus and the police, they're actually, they have a system where, depending on the person answers the questions, it gives them advice on how to give basic first aid, or asks all the questions they need to give to the medics. So medics know exactly what they're walking into when they get to the call, and same thing with the police departments. So it's, that job has increased dramatically in technology and how serious the liability it is. And dispatchers are getting called more and more often to help out court because they can actually help us set probable cause for arrest, basically what we've said, if they get a call for domestic, for example. And so they're great open there. We have 11 full-time dispatchers in there. One of them functions as a head dispatcher, Vicky Avery, and she does work several shifts in dispatch, but also administers overseas training for them. And the 911 grant, generally, we get about $50,000 every year in grant funds to help offset existing salaries and training. The grant is not guaranteed, but so far, every year, we've been able to get it. And wages for them have gone up with just, again, that went through a lot of transition in there. That job is a, is a high burnout rate in that position, and so we've had a lot of step movements, we have a lot of people on steps in dispatch as well as the police department, so that's why the wages are up 4%. And the only thing I'm really asking for is, again, just the cost of things, matter for a very slight increase in uniforms and clothing because we're outfitting new dispatches. We still like them to look professional, and they do deal with the public, so we want a uniform on them, and just that sort of very slight increase on some new uniforms and clothing. Mark, that's it for dispatch, right, to the coalition.
All good, folks? Any questions? All right, roll on, please.
All right. So coalition, as you know, for years was grant funded, has the grants ran out, the town was realizing the importance of their work, and had them fall under the police department budget. They were always house of the police department anyway, even though the grant, and we have such a great relationship with them and the schools, it just made sense for them to fall under us. So the budget request for them is for the salaries, is at 4.45. Some of that has to do with that wage and salary study that came in. And expenses, I spoke to Erica McAmara, we do some opiate funds coming in, some different grants, and I think so, she actually said that she could level fund her budget for expenses for this year. So the only increase for that is the, is for salary lines, zero for the expenses. Annually, so far, the coalition staff conducted 115 prevention activities, reaching 2,100 individuals in Redding. Yet to date, the mental health clinician has conducted over 200 crisis fallout calls for mental health. So I timed her takeover as the mental health clinician in April, so figure from April until the end of October, she's already helped involve 200 crisis fallout calls for mental health. She's been a huge asset to us in the police station. She is going on the road with us, she's going for ride-alongs with the officers, she has responded to calls when it's safe, and she's been working at the schools almost daily, working with the guidance councils, working with the schools. She's a ball of energy, and she's been great to have, a huge asset to us, and it's working out great for us. She's hosted office hours and provided therapy, exceptions to children, teens, adults in Redding. She goes to the senior centers, she goes to the library for office hours, and she also checks in regularly with the police officers. And I think she's been able to ride along with every single police officer we've had so far, and meet all of them and work on the cruiser with them, so it's been great. They are involved in a pilot program with pocket translators, and we've been tested with the police officers, and so far, they've worked out great. We have several officers carrying them. I think it does up to like 100 different languages, and it's a little pocket translator, the person speaks into it, it translates for the officer, the officer can speak back in, translate it back to the person. And we're doing a pilot program with that, and the goal is that, once we ensure that this is what we want, it's going to work, we're going to use hopefully some of the opiate funds to have one put in every single school, every department and town will have one, and then every single cruiser will have one. But that's the goal, but they've been the forefront of running that for us. And that's basically what I have for the budget for us. Deputy chief, I don't know if you have anything to add in, Christine?
Nope, that was it. Just to answer a little bit more of Mary Ann's questions about the dog and the Middlesex Ave, those are going to be more like runaway kids, and so it's not, the canine won't be, cost won't go up that much because of that home, because those are more runaways than actually endangered, missing at the time.
Thanks, folks. Board members, any questions?
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, chief. I guess I should have piggybacked off Mark's question earlier, but I guess my biggest fear is when it comes down to all the school stuff, et cetera. We've seen everything that's happened before in the news, et cetera. I guess for me, do we, I mean, you don't have to go into detail, but do we randomly test whether or not people can get into the schools, et cetera? Like, do you just send like some random 25-year-olds to like buzz and see if they get buzzed in? Like, are these kind of things happening, just so I can feel a tiny bit better?
Without revealing too much, I can tell you that we're sure that the safety protocols are working, we're confident that they're working. We do evaluate everything, work the access cards, and we, nothing is perfect, but I feel that we are in a fantastic place compared to other places out there. And I have kids in the school system as well, so trust me, I take this very seriously.
That is reassuring, thanks.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We happen to run a lot of testing through dispatch with the, you know, panic alarm systems and making sure that everything's working properly. So our school resource officers and facilities test that very often.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thank you, chief.
Good evening. Are you there?
I think it's Doug.
Yep.
Chief Clark.
Can you stop sharing your screen, chief? Thank you.
We can teach you how to take control of this.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, the town manager, and the general public. It's been a great experience working for the town of Redding. My team and I would like to thank town leadership for the continued and unwavering support. My name is Aday Solari, the public health director for the town of Redding. I'm here to present the health department's proposed Level 1 budget for fiscal year 2024. Next slide, please. Our mission is to protect and promote the health and well-being of the residents and visitors of Redding. As a result, our key responsibilities include leading public health activities related to disease outbreaks and surveillance, administering vaccinations, managing establishment permitting and inspections, managing compliance checks and inspections related to tobacco control, animal control, and pest control, tracking and responding to public health complaints, and collaborating with federal, state, and local agencies to coordinate public health responses. Next slide, please. As you all know, a section of the police station is being retrofitted to house the health department staff, as well as the staff of the coalition for prevention and support. I'm happy to report that the project is nearing its completion, and we're in the process of scheduling our move to the police department. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the changes we are proposing to make for fiscal year 2024. To the left of your screen is the current staffing level. To the right is the proposed staffing level. We are proposing to decrease our staffing level from 4.64 full-time employees to four full-time employees. In fiscal year 2021, we added a part-time nurse position to augment COVID-19 response activities. With COVID-19 being under control, we no longer feel the need to keep the part-time position. In the highly unlikely event that a need arises to reinstate the part-time nurse position, I've had a discussion with Fidel, and he's open to reinstating the position using a different funding source. Eliminating the part-time position frees up $36,025. The freed-up funds will be used to balance our total budget and the remainder will be reallocated to other departments that may need it. Next slide, please. Here's our proposed budget summary for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. This summary includes the salaries budget and the expense budget combined. By eliminating the part-time nurse position, we're looking at it, we're looking at a total budget decrease in the amount of twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, which is equivalent to a five point nine percent decrease from fiscal year twenty twenty-three's budget. Next slide, please. If you look at the salaries budget, you can see that we've proposed a budget decrease of nine point five percent of thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Even though we saved thirty-six thousand and twenty-five dollars by eliminating the part-time nurse position, we had to use two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars out of the savings to fund salary adjustments and cost of living adjustments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, leaving us with a total savings balance of thirty-three thousand seven hundred. Next slide, please. In the proposed expense budget, the total additional proposed expense is six thousand five hundred dollars. This will increase the expense budget by six point one percent. We plan on using six thousand dollars for professional development and training and five hundred dollars for health clinic supplies. Even though there is a six point one percent increase in the expense budget, there is a total net budget decrease of twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars if you look at the budget as a whole, meaning if you look at the expense and salaries budget combined. Next slide, please. In summary, we are proposing to eliminate the part-time nurse position, which will free up thirty-six thousand and twenty-five dollars. We're using some of the freed-up funds to offset the cost of living adjustments and salary adjustments in the amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. We're using it to fund the professional development line item in the amount of six thousand dollars. And we're using it to fund the health clinic supplies line item in the amount of five hundred dollars. After all is said and done, we're left with a total budget decrease in the amount of twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, which is equivalent to a five point nine percent decrease from fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Can you go to the Excel sheet? So there's one more. And this pretty much captures everything I just talked about. If you scroll down to the red highlights, um, you can see the six thousand dollars we're asking for and the five hundred dollars we're asking for. So again, um, the total budget decreases uh in the amount of twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Um, you know, which is equivalent to five point nine percent decrease from fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So the way I see this is that we're not really asking for much. Matter of fact, we are giving back some of the funds to be allocated to other departments. Questions, please?
Board members? I have a question for you, Aday. Um, so it looks like the health inspections, the resources allocated to that have gone down. Can you talk about why? You had a full-time and a contract person last year, and now you're gonna have just one person.
So we had a contract person last year. And then later on in April, we added a full-time inspector.
Swap?
And uh, correct. Once we did that, we eliminated the contract health inspector. And um, you know, Jen has been great. She's been a great addition to our team, uh, very competent. And um, yeah.
So um, as you, you're going down, so it's mostly the part-time nurse. That's the real change, right?
Pretty much, yes. That's the real change.
Okay. And then the other question um is uh we we allocated a fair amount of ARPA funds toward emergency supplies, COVID activities, and things like that. And I know we've had some discussions about uh how much that we think is gonna be needed. Is that something that we'll continue to monitor and at some point perhaps come back?
Absolutely, absolutely. We um, I think FinCom allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we have spent about one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we have approximately one hundred and six thousand dollars left. Um, in the event that the part-time help, uh, part-time nurse position needs to be reinstated,
That's the, that's the, okay.
We might have to leave it to the funds.
That's kind of what I figured. Okay, ju- just to clarify, Select Word actually um is the one that authorizes the money. And and those are ARPA funds. So if it turned out that there was extra money, it would come back
Yeah.
for for reallocation. But, cool. Okay, thank you. I understand now. Hey, other questions? No?
Thank you, Aday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks.
All right. Public Works.
Hi.
Hi, Jane.
Hi. Um, I think Caitlin's gonna do the slides for me. My name is Jane Consella, Director of Public Works. Um, I wanted to recognize Chris Cole, Assistant Director, who was provided an awful lot of information in the presentation and the supervisors and staff uh who support us every day. So um, let's see. I'm not seeing the slides up.
Um, one second, James.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right. I could have been on something else. I'll just double check them. Here we go. All right. Okay, thanks, Caitlin. Um, okay, so the first slide shows, uh, the second slide shows in chat. Uh, we have sixty full-time employees that did not change from last year and five seasonals that are budgeted. Um, we've had a very difficult time getting seasonals um this year. They, we've got a couple in the summer for a couple of months um that were, uh, went back to college. And we have a different seasonal group that seems to be coming. They're not staying any length of time. They're very short-term employment. Um, and so that hurts us an awful lot because those are the people that we would normally keep on and they help with all the the leaf cleanup and, you know, a lot of the work at this time of year. So we haven't had any of those people. Um, we have three openings. Um, and as you can see, two of the three openings are in the forestry division. It's a working for person, the tree climber. And one is in the tech uh technician mechanic's position. Even though there's only three openings, we've had, you know, up to eleven and twelve, those three openings are difficult for us because they're highly skilled employees that we um, we we can't seem to get. We've had a couple of those openings um there for a year or so. Um, and so more recently, in the forestry department, has four people, the foreman. Um, is still there, but we had a tree climber, as you can see, and he got injured. So we are down to a foreman in that position only in that whole division. So we're very limited to what we can do. We're gonna be seeing an awful lot of outsourced work over there because of that. Um, and in fact, the supervisor has been working, he's also an operator. He's been working um occasionally with with the foreman, trying to help with moving trees and stuff, but he can't be doing that too much. So that's gonna be a problem for us. It is a problem for us. Um, let's see. The um, the next slide, thanks. Um, administration, that that really hasn't changed um much as far as the roles that they do. They're very varied. Um, an awful lot of connection with the community as far as communication. Um, the one thing I will point out in here is um we have been working for several months on a um contract because as of November first, the D E P um, um, banned mattresses from the waste stream, right? So um, many communities have been trying to get a contract in place. The one I wanted um is to have curbside pickup because a lot of communities are just having this drop-off. Um, and people, a lot of people can't do that. Um, they don't have the the um, the ability to drop off. So I wanted to have a curbside pickup element to it. Um, along with, you know, an option if somebody wanted to save a little bit of money and drop it off. We we got a container at the garage for a ten thousand dollar grant, and so people can drop it off at that for a reduced fee. But it's been a long haul trying to get a contract in place because there's only a couple of vendors throughout the state that will do curbside. Um, and they are at capacity because this was not um well-planned, let's say, from the, from the state. Um, they just, they just didn't expect um, you know, the number of vendors that just weren't available. They were coming in from other states and the the language and the contracts were um not anything that we have seen before. So uh, as of yesterday, Fidel, um, uh, might have been this morning, Fidel signed the contract for the mattress recycling. So we're um getting their portal up and running and that should be, you know, within the week. Um, so uh, that doesn't mean that mattresses will get picked up curbside because there has to be some sort of a um, you know, a minimum that they're gonna request of us, but they will start scheduling them um within the week, I would think. So that's the biggest takeaway on that. We still offer that Black Earth composting special. We will give you a bin if you sign up and whatnot. Currently, we have four hundred and twenty subscribers. That has inched up, but it isn't, you know, as many as we originally thought, you know, we would have. We had quite a few initially and then it sort of slowed down, so. But that that is still available. If people want to sign up, they get a free bin, a free roll of bags, and and um they just pay the monthly fee. Okay, next slide. Um, engineering, these are the projects that I pulled out related to general fund. Engineering is involved with an awful lot of projects, but for the general fund, basically, they do the paving program. Um, and part of that, we have um an aspect of Lowell Street that we're gonna start doing in the spring. Um, that is not related to our regular paving program because it would have eaten up that whole budget. So um, we pulled that out and there's gonna be two different sections. One of it's six hundred thousand. And then two years from now will be the remaining portion of Lowell Street, five hundred thousand. They oversee the line painting um throughout town. They do um a pavement management study that they oversee. And um recently, they received a grant for hundred thousand for a designing of the um track road east bridge. And more than likely, how that works is once that design is done, they'll go for the five hundred thousand dollar construction. Um, more than likely, they'll get it because it's sort of a two-part thing. It's um so that that will be another project for them. Next. So I'll just quickly highlight what, one of the projects that they do is a pavement management program. And um, what that is, is it's um the snapshot of our pavement throughout town at any given time, right? So next slide. Um, it measures like P C I, an index, okay? So it goes from zero to a hundred, hundred being best, that's sort of like a brand-new road, right? So right now, we're at seventy-eight, which is not bad. Um, we have ninety-two miles of roadway. Um, but Chris actually figured out that if we, you know, brought all the roads up to, you know, let's say a hundred right now, it would cost us seventeen million dollars to do that. So, um, next slide. We usually get about six hundred thousand dollars from chapter ninety to do our roadway. This year, we got a supplement from Winter Recovery for three hundred and eight thousand. That's not a usual thing, so that's an add-on. And then generally, we fund it at four hundred and twenty-five thousand from the town every year. So we're putting in a little over a million generally. Those are the two supplements I was telling you about for Lowell Street. That that really doesn't count, let's say, but those are additional funds that are going in just for that road. Um, so generally speaking, we put a little over a million dollars every year towards um, towards the the roadways. Next slide. So that's what that looks like. That middle blue line is what that gets us at seventy-eight. So if we put in, I I show that to you because if the town had decided to put in more money, let's say they decided to put in that one point three, you would see that P C I go up. If you just wanna use the chapter ninety money and you're not gonna be using any town money, the chap, that would bring the P C I down very quickly, as you can see. That's the green line. So it's just, you know, how how they, how you wanna add or not add on to that that roadway budget. Next slide. Highway and equipment maintenance, those, you know, all of the 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 normal that I had talked about in the past. This particularly, although we did some special projects. Um, we um did one night street paving. We did a grow street sidewalk. That was a project that was done. Uh, was supposed to be done by a contractor that we let go last year. So we had this portion of their their contract that we had to do. So the guys, you know, rented a sidewalk unit and did the sidewalks themselves. So we did a pretty good job. We did the community garden, which was a huge project. I'll show you quickly like some of the um, the aspects of that. And rubbish recycling is not a project, but it has been this year. Let's just put it that way. Next slide. So that's the um, the grow street, the sidewalk. The guys rented that machine and they did a great job. I mean, they hadn't, generally hadn't used it before, but um, they uh, they figured it out. Next slide. So the community garden, it's a great project. The guys really enjoyed being involved with that. Um, it was pretty much every division within um D P W um that that um worked on it. And it was just, it was a good project. Next slide. Rubbish recycling, I'm, I bring that up only because I get calls a lot about, you know, now that we have Republic, you know, what's different? Well, there's really nothing different as far as the contract. I just wanna highlight the, it's the exact same contract. It, it, you know, if we keep that company, they'll be here until July twenty twenty-six. Um, that might be June thirtieth, sorry, twenty twenty-six. I'll have to check on that. But anyway, twenty twenty-six. And those are the 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 aspects of the contract. And it's a three percent increase every year. So there's nothing different. J R M was just purchased by Republic. There's no change in in anything. Um, you know, what people are seeing is that their schedule is different. They may not pick up like they did every, you know, they started on this street every year for, every week for years and years, and now they're starting somewhere else in town. But it's still a Monday schedule or whatever, you know. So I think people are just um asking because there were so many changes with them and so many things that went wrong initially. Um, but the contract is the exact same as J R M. It's just been a little bit of growing pains. Um, for the answer, the disposal contract, it's a separate one. It's a five-year contract. Um, that ends in June of twenty twenty-five. That's also a three percent increase per year. And generally speaking, just for, you know, um, an idea, we use about seven thousand tons per year is what we put up there. So. Um, next. So let's um see click fix requests. And as you can see, there's twenty-two hundred uh requests that, um, I think it's like over sixteen hundred more than we did last year. A lot of those are related to to rubbish recycling. Um, but, you know, that's, I think I, it's a two hundred and fifty percent increase is what I figured out over last year's secret fixes. Um, and majority of them are highway uh stuff, so those guys have been really busy. Next. Um, I, and I know that, you know, it's an accommodated cost, but I I also wanted to kind of bring this up because um, you know, the guys generally um oversee, see this, of course, and FY twenty-four, it's six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, but, you know, I just wanted to kind of, where I had um some questions on snow and ice and what we do for, you know, roadway, sidewalks, whatever, I wanted to just bring this up. So this past year, I was just finalizing with the beta group, analyzed and evaluated all our snow operations. We just thought it was a good idea to have them, have a second set of eyes on, you know, the routes that we use and the, you know, the trucks and how we do it and everything. They tweaked it. They didn't make major changes, which is fine, because then they looked at and they said, you know, what you were doing for the most part is, was great. Um, and so they made some suggestions, whatever, but it wasn't major changes. So that was good. Um, but there is an increase um in rock salt, thirteen percent increase. Um, calcium chloride, there is no increase because that's an option yet on our contract. Um, we did add a calcium chloride truck sprayer and use that to pre-treat roads. And that helps to prevent that first layer from adhering to roadway. So sometimes if you see the trucks out, they're sort of spraying initially before it even snows, that's what they're doing. Um, so that helps with that and accelerates the cleanup process. Um, we have forty-five miles of Um, we have forty-five miles of sidewalks that we do with four sidewalk units, four, three bobcats. We, um, do the downtown during the storm if staffing allows, but that's, you know, we try to do that. Um, all of the sidewalks are after the storm. So there are two types, like if we have a, a snowstorm that is, let's say, um, you know, a foot deep, we can't really use a V-nose plow. We'd have to use a blower to get the snow up. Um, people don't like when we use the, um, the V-nose because it means they have to come back out and shovel. Like you'd always say, hey, if you can get the whole thing done in five hours, why, why aren't you using that, right? Um, it's because when we use the V-nose, um, it means, you know, the snow is now back in people's driveways. Um, and we get a lot of calls on that. So, um, and then you're never going to get, you know, like on the street, you're never going to get a sidewalk down to the asphalt. It's just the way that, that plow edges work, um, has to be above, you know, the sidewalk, usually about an inch, an inch and a half. So, um, you're going to always get that crispy, you know, icy layer, um, or snowy layer, depending on the, how cold it is. Um, so it's frustrating. It's hard sometimes to walk on and whatnot, but that's the difference between, you know, plowing a street and plowing a sidewalk. Next. Arcs, um, take, had about twenty-five thousand cars that came into the compost center. They take care of, you know, a lot of, um, the tennis and basketball courts and skating rinks and whatnot. They do the lead pickup and trash pickup. And as I mentioned, they've been, it's been difficult to see a father because they don't have the seasonals to help them out. Next. Um, but this was a little project they decided to take on themselves, which was Driscoll Field. Um, and they had a couple of ambitious people saying, you know, they wanted to try to re-saw it. And so they put in almost forty-five hundred square feet of saw and they redid the whole thing. They did a phenomenal job on that. Next. And this one is Simon's Way. They redid the pitches mound. Um, so there, there's just like a real interest in some of the things that, you know, we try to encourage them. If there's an ability to do it as far as time, whatever, we let them do it. So, next. Cemetery, um, had just a slight decrease year over year. Pretty much they run about the same between, um, internment, slot sales, that type of thing. Next. Um, but some of the things that, you know, we get calls on because people are wondering what we're, we're doing is that we'll, um, we, we have to repair sinking graves after the winter. So that's what that is. Um, you know, we've had, people think we're, we're digging people up and never even, wouldn't believe the calls. Um, it's just, we have to repair the graves if they sink. So that's one of the things. And, um, next, this is a woman employee training another one on how to, how to dig a grave, which is, you know, kind of a unique skill. Next. Forestry Division, you know, right now, as I mentioned, has been difficult with, um, personnel. Uh, they've done an awful lot of work this past year. Um, they also removed thirteen ash trees. I mentioned last year that that's, you know, an issue, the, um, the Emerald Ash Cora. So, um, yeah, they're, they've been working hard and they also did the holiday lighting. So, um, you know, we have one key forest person, but there's a couple others that have been helping them more on the ground to get some, some of the work that we normally need done, done. So, um, next. One of the things that the forest crew does and only does is what we call windshield survey. They'll drive around once a year throughout the whole town, sometimes twice, depending on the type of weather we've had. And they look for, you know, at, at issues that are happening with, with trees, if they can just spot them. And this is something, um, that they happen to find during a windshield survey. So you can see, you know, you might not have gotten a call on, on that until it actually fell. So, next. And this is one of the, um, a tree, an ash tree and clover circle that they removed. The town had planted that in eighty-six, but it was damaged by that, the Emerald Dashboard. So they removed that. There's, um, many more trees that have to be removed. And then this summer they spent a lot of time doing that with all the heat. Next. One thing I wanted to point out is this year in February of twenty-two, there was, um, a mandate for, um, train, certain type of training for CDL. They had to have, um, specialized training and with X amount of hours. And so we were going to have to be sending guys out, um, to, to like nets or to whatever certified companies, um, at five, six, seven thousand dollars per employee, um, to get their CDLs. Next. So what we did was we looked into becoming a, a certified, um, site and, um, went through all the paperwork, went through getting everything, uh, set up. And, um, next, um, we, we became a certified site. So we have all of the people within these circles here, um, are required to have CDLs. So you can imagine the savings on having done that. And the program is so successful that we've had other communities, you know, ask us for the template because they all have to go send their people also through this, you know, certified training with an outside company that's costing a fortune. So, um, and even Meyer has reached out and asked us to, to share that with them. So that's been really successful. Next. And this is just a quick list of some of the courses, initial courses we do for new employee onboard training. Um, somebody, you know, just gets a flavor of that very early on from coming, um, when they, when they get hired. So a lot of them are just safety courses that, you know, they need to know. So that's why when we lose an employee, um, it's, it's costly because, you know, it's the time to, to go find somebody else, but we've also invested a lot of time and energy into them also. Next. Some of the challenges we have, acquiring and retaining staff, um, and, um, acquiring and retaining contractors for snow and ice removal. So, um, you know, we have one of our contractors who provides seventy percent of the equipment for contractors. So if he ever left, we would be in big trouble. Um, we have supply chain issues for a variety of construction materials, um, and space issues, you know, for, at the garage for a lot of reasons, training, vehicle storage, material storage, uh, cemetery, garage space issues. And the Emerald Dashboard is going to continue to be a problem because of the ash trees. So, next. That's the, um, salaries. You can see the difference between twenty-three and twenty-four. That is really about the paying class study. Um, that was clerical staff that, that got that, the bump. Everything else pretty much, um, are contractual. So you can see that's usually about three percent roughly. Um, and if it's less than that, it's because there's been some long-term employee, employee who has left and then, you know, um, probably going to get, hire somebody at a lower level. Um, that's how that usually works. And then the expenses, um, the engineering thing looks funny, but that's because, um, in twenty-three, there's been some money put in this past November for, um, technical services for the Birch Meadow, Meadow study that will be in there next year. And, let's see. So an overall three point three percent. Um, next slide shows it a little bit better. Okay, so those are, there's no changes in staffing, but we added money in the various areas here. We need more money for traffic control repairs. Those can be costly when it's, when somebody hits a traffic light and we don't know who, who it is, if there's no police report, you know, that becomes very costly for us to repair. Um, computer supplies are just increasing for various reasons. Um, outsourced repairs for the vehicles, um, line painting this year, we weren't able to do as much as we needed to do because the, the paint went up besides everything else. So, um, so we had an issue with that. Um, highway fuels, you know, you know, uh, yeah, that, that's, um, has, has gone up. Administration, administration supplies, that's more like the legal ads and whatnot. That, that's not all legal ads, but that five hundred dollar difference is related to that. Um, and, you know, fuel oil, nothing, oh, the professional technical services is, I'm putting in, um, some money because we are having some, um, stones redone at the Laurel Hill Cemetery. I am going to pursue some grants, but, you know, the, right now there's only one grant and it's not even open until January. So I'm not sure of the likelihood of getting it. So I want to put some money into that. Um, and then just some other things that we're seeing increases on seeds and the red clay and various things. And then a little bit more money for, um, technical service, professional technical services related to forestry. I assume that if we cannot, um, find, um, employees, forestry employees, whatever tree climbers, that we will ultimately use some of that salary money to outsource. But, you know, right now I, I just wanted to buffer it a little bit. And then brush grinding has been increasing. So, I think that's it. Yeah. Should I, you want to ask questions related to that before I go on to enterprise?
Sure. Hang on just one second, Jane. Any questions, folks? Chris?
Thanks, Mark. Uh, and thank you, Jane. Just a couple of questions. So on the whole mattress scenario, um, so it used to be covered under our trash contract that, that they would pick up the mattresses, box springs, et cetera.
Correct.
And now they're not. So it doesn't, obviously, the contract doesn't go down because they're not providing that service anymore. But they don't have to provide us with, with any additional service or? Do you see what I'm saying?
No.
Like they got?
Yeah, I do, I do see what you mean. Because actually one community was trying to pursue that angle.
Legally.
Um, and I think what they were eventually told was because it was banned. Like if it was something they just decided they didn't want to pick up anymore, that would be a problem. But because it was banned, that, that's an extra expense that now they have to go transport separately, differently and to a mattress recycler. So that's outside of the realm of the contract. You know, if, if it was just they decided, hey, we don't want to do mattresses anymore, you know, that, that would be a problem. But because the DEP stepped in and they banned it and then required a certain process, then, you know, Republic or JRM, you know, said this and this is outside of the contract, right? And it actually is.
So I guess on a renewal of said contract, they wouldn't have to cover that anymore. So in theory it would go down, but everything goes up every, anyway. So.
Yeah, in theory.
Do we know how many mattresses like were being picked up before? Are we talking like thousands or is this negligible?
Yeah, so unfortunately because it wasn't something that, um, they needed to track, they never tracked. That would have been a nice number to get. Um, so I, I'm thinking it's, what we did is, um, they, they said they would only pick up, um, schedules of forty, fifty mattresses and then they would come into town. So I'm thinking every couple of weeks they could come into town. We don't know yet because we, we have no guess. I've been asking other communities. There's some that say they do a hundred a month, others, you know, it, it's all really depends. So I would think that they could possibly be in town every few weeks picking up forty or so mattresses. So I'm surprised I've only actually in the last, let's say, week got calls on it, maybe because we did advertise an awful lot, like get rid of it before November first, um, you know, if you can. Um, but we haven't gotten a lot of calls on like, what do I do with this? And, and I, you know, um, I think it's because we, well, we have the container down at the garage. Um, but people don't have it, you know, an ability to bring it down there. It's not a convenient thing, you know?
Is it, is it free if I bring it down there right now? Not me, but.
So it's supposed to be thirty-three dollars because that's our cost. We're not making anything on this money. So the, the, what we did is we set up something on their portal that says, okay, you know, I want it curbside, but that's fifty-five dollars. So they would just, they schedule it directly with the company and whatnot. The other thing I added on there was to say, what, what will you charge us if we have a container and you come, you know, pick it up? Because I want some option for people to reduce, a little bit reduced rate. And they said, we'll charge thirty-three dollars per unit. So that, that's what, what we're charging on their portal. What people will do is they'll pay the thirty-three dollars to them. They bring down their receipt or the slip or something, some sort of, something that shows us that they paid them and they can drop off their, their mattress at the garage.
And then, so if it's a mattress and a box spring, that's a hundred and ten or sixty-six, there's no like discount?
Right, right. Discount. It's, it's really terrible, honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and I think, you know, places like Jordans and whatever, I think they still take them. I would really encourage people to, you know, to have others take it if they can. But.
And then in regards to the, the C-click Fix and the massive swing on, on trash and all that, do we know where we're at for reimbursement for getting any of that money back for what you guys had to do or?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yeah, we, um, well, go ahead, Jane, sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, we, we, um, we calculated, uh, all of our costs for labor and we, we, uh, calculated all, all the additional costs, right, uh, uh, for contractors, uh, uh, and that will be, that has been discounted from, from, uh, from what we owe in, in October. It, it, it was, you know, a, a, a three-week period. So, so it's not like, you know, uh, uh, it's like we cannot pay for, you know, for September and August and July. What I mean, so, but it, it was mostly contained in, in, in October.
And they accepted that as being reduced?
They, they accepted the reduced, sure? Yes.
Um, and then my only other thing is the, uh, the sidewalk and paving schedule that you had us on with the blue line in the middle. I, I mean, I'll, I'll speak for myself, but I, I would personally like to see that increased towards the red that you got, that you had going up to the top. However, it's possible, even if it's a minuscule increase, I just think our roads and sidewalks definitely need attention. I know you had the number of seventy-eight is our score or whatever, but i- if I had a guess, I would have said it would have been way lower than that. So that's just for me anyway. But thank you though, Jane, for.
Yeah.
For essentially like the amount of stuff that the DPW does on here on, that's listed. I, I mean, it just, I don't know what you don't do in town at this point, so.
Yeah, they're, they're great. They're a great group of people to work with.
Gex?
Thank you. Um, thanks, Jane. Say, great job on that CDL program. Um, that's clearly saving us a lot of money and being creative and I appreciate you squeezing that into the schedule of everything else you have to do. Um, so there were a couple other to follow up on the earlier question on Republic. Um, I had understood there were a couple other issues with the billing or, I don't know if it was insurance. It's all about settled now. Are we back on track with them or maybe not so much?
I think we're back on track, Fidel. I mean, I, they have, um, they, they recently, you know, changed root supervisors on us this, this week. But the one that we have been working with for, you know, a month or so is very good and he's still going to be involved. Um, things are, I think are a lot better. They still miss things and what, whatnot, but I'll tell you, JRM did too, right? So we encourage people to do what they did before, C-click Fix or call us or whatever and we, you know, will take care of it. So, um, it's, to me, it's really leveled off an awful lot. Uh, it was, it was crazy, right, for a few weeks? But, um, yeah, they, they are responsive and that's all we wanted them to be. Um, so.
Are they, are they sending us correct bills now? Can we pay their invoices?
Yes, so we did pay July, August, September, um, and we waited to, for October because we wanted them to agree on, you know, that we're going to reduce it by, you know, our expenses and the expense of the, the contract that we brought in to help out. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's going to be processed, yeah.
It's great news. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Another question for you. Cal?
Oh, thanks, thanks, Jane. It has a, as a municipality, are we allowed to work with vocational schools to help with the tree climbing aspect?
Um.
Uh, because they have, they have co-op programs. Um, you know, I know Essex Tech has an arborist. Uh because they have, they have co-op programs. Um, you know, I know Essex Tech has an arborist, specific arborist program.
Yeah, so we actually um um got got an applicant um and he was in the forestry division. It might have been Essex Saggy or something just last week. And I I said, oh, this is interesting. Um so I shouted to H I, the problem is the, they can't work with equipment. Um for the like, you have to be, we have to have eighteen years old and not to be able to work with anything beyond a weed whacker. Um so, yeah, we probably couldn't hire somebody in in school.
Well, some seniors, some seniors are eighteen already.
Yeah, if they were eighteen, yes.
Depends. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if they were eighteen, but it that not younger than that.
Okay, that makes sense. And then on the Black Earth, yeah, I wish that number was mu- much higher. I'm a Black Earth subscriber. We love it. Is and I heard from a resident that, are we doing a pilot program at a school? Is that, is that miscommunicated to me?
No, somebody um asked me um about that last year. They wanted to do a pilot program. Um I don't know where that ended up, though. They're not doing it like through me. I think they were doing it with um Black Black Earth. And maybe, maybe Kevin Gerson from Facilities may have some more information about it. But, you know, I, all I did was give them the context that I have at Black Earth. It wasn't anything that, you know, we were involved with other than that.
Okay, it wasn't town sponsored. And the last question on the, I know the barrel program and the, you know, first roll of bags, which is helpful. Can, because it obviously benefits Black Earth, benefits us, you know, we saved nine thousand dollars there on that on that on the tonnage. Can they, can you reach out to them to see if they can try to give a a one time incentive or we do a massive push to get to a thousand or seven, like, you know, not not just a, not just a barrel, but two months free or three months free or I, I don't know, it's just a good, such a great service that we can, A, it's great for the environment and B, we save money.
Right, right. Yeah, it's worth the shot.
Black Friday from Black Earth?
Something like that, something like that. I mean, the the there's a, is a the group in town that has been trying to get this, has gotten off the ground, but like Jane said, we got to the three hundreds and that we're at four twenty, but it's like, you know, it's.
It's not moving like I thought.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I think we have to provide some incentives, maybe, um sponsored by Black Earth, not us.
Yeah.
Check it.
Yeah, no, I definitely will do that. We chat to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jane. Just one quick question on um our slide deck, um number one twenty with expenses by division. I might have missed this, but I noticed that thirty five, over thirty five percent decrease in engineering. Is that because of projects moving out of the engineering phase? Is it staffing?
So so that is in F Y twenty three, we normally that that would have been, I think, forty four thousand, that eighty four would have been forty four. Um and but we added forty thousand at November Town Meeting for a Birch Meadow Design Study.
Okay.
Um so it just looks a little skewed because now it looks like this huge decrease where actually it would have been a slight increase between forty four to fifty four, right?
Yes, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Karen, did you have a question?
Um, no, I'm just gonna, uh, Carl, I'll take as a follow up. Um I I somebody reached out to me like three or four weeks ago and I think they're talking about a pilot at Birch Meadow. And I think they're moving ahead and they're 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 talking to the schools. So I'll try to get an update and um come back some more.
Yeah, I heard something.
Yeah, I I I'm surprised we haven't heard an announcement, so I'm not sure what happened. Just holidays.
Uh one quick question, Jane, and following up on Chris's question. Um so seventy eight. Can you help us? Is that, you know, do most communities around us achieve that kind of number? Are we better? Are we worse? Are we similar?
Oh, boy. That I don't know. Chris, do you have any idea?
I, that I don't know either. I really don't know because um, you know, every other community could have a different style program too. So you're not comparing apples to apples either, you know. So I really, I really can't say what how the pavement conditions are in other communities.
When we were spending less money on roads, where did we drop down to? What were the numbers when when we were all saying, oh, my God, we got to supplement the budget? Chapter ninety, money isn't enough.
Right. I'm I'm guessing, Chris, but I, it seems to me it was seventy one, seventy two, something like that, right?
So it's quite a bit better.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, probably. I mean, if you look, if you.
Ten years ago?
Yeah, if you go back at that chart again, um that graph, Caitlin has the three line graphs on it.
Number one or two, maybe.
One more, two more.
One more. There you go. Yeah.
That one, that one right there. So um, yeah, can't say for certain, but um most likely it was probably down in the lower seventies, I would imagine.
Got it.
That's what I remember. Yeah.
Okay, so we we've come way up and then if we went back a year or two, is seventy eight kind of where we've been? Is that roughly correct? We went to twenty twenty one or twenty?
Last year, we were at about seventy seven, so it has come up just slightly.
So it has a little bit. Okay, that's the extra three hundred K that we put in. Yeah, I mean, I wish we could do more. It's just, it's another million dollars a year is kind of tough.
Oh, yeah. It's just something, you know, that's that's how it would have be affected if if you, if we had ever had a whole mess of money, you know?
Give me mine. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Do you want to do um enterprise or no?
Yeah, um so start with water. There you go. Okay, so water distribution system. Um as you know, we have two tanks, um booster station. Slight increase in residential water connections over last year. The main key takeaway on this is consumption is we are thirty percent below state suggested limit of um sixty five gallons per capita. So we do really well in in um conservation, yeah. Okay, next slide. These are some of the projects. Again, engineering is involved with these. I just wanted to split them out by um enterprise funds. So the Auburn Street Tank Replacement um downtown phase one um that's under construction, should be completed by spring of twenty twenty three. Um the lead service audits going out to bid in January of twenty twenty three. Um gazebo circle, um booster station, that's um underway, under design, I should say. Um we're designing um phase two, if you want to say, um of the Walkers Brook Drive Water Main Replacement. And Emerson Emerson Drive Water Main Place, Emerson Street Water Main Replacement. So those are some of the big projects in water. Next, uh water conservation program. We've given back six hundred and thirty two thousand plus to the community. You know, over forty four hundred rebate. So it's a great program for the community. Next. Um this is our billable water usage. As you can see, um, you know, during COVID, the twenty twenty one, everybody was home, so we expected those those uh numbers to be real high. Um we also, they went down last year, um but then this past hit hit back up. And, you know, the only thing I can really attribute that to is this long, hot, dry summer that we had. So the usage is just way up there again. Next. Did you want to stop in between?
Why don't we do all the enterprises at once? That's all right.
Okay, all right. So the SOAR um enterprise um consists of, we have a hundred and eight miles of sanitary SOAR. We do have a master plan that was developed in two thousand and ten. We're currently working with C D M um to update that plan. Um and we should have an update to it um somewhere in, you know, early of next year, early of of um next calendar year. We have completed um three pump stations so far. We're uh in the middle of doing Sturgis Pump Station. That's beginning shortly than the next week. Um and we'll have eight remaining stations after that. And the master plan will probably um change up some of the um uh um timing on on the station. So it might be a little bit changed to the capital plan from that. Next. Some of the current SOAR projects we have at the downtown SOAR Main um project that was completed, where, as I mentioned, we're in the middle of doing Sturgis Park SOAR Pump Station. And um phase twelve SOAR I N I improvements. Um so that's underway. Next. Stormwater. Um we continue to work with the Nifty's permit. Um do a lot of wet weather sampling. Um and um as you know, we got the Mallet Song's um Stormwater Project Grant. Uh that's gonna, that started in some some way, some of the work has started on that. Um but it's under design for the most part, but some of the initial work um has started. So um that's going to be a great project for the community. Um downtown stormwater improvements, um for a million dollars, that's under design. Next. Some of the challenges in enterprise funds are the same, acquiring retaining staff. Um we lucked out. We we were able last year, as you know, to get back some of the water division people that we had lost to other communities. So those for the most part, um water source, stormwater staffing is um is a hundred percent right now, which is great. Um, you know, I don't know what it will be tomorrow. But when we lose somebody in those divisions, especially in water, it's a great loss because of the amount of training that they need. So um we have ongoing issues with materials shortages. We have an aging infrastructure, as you know, from Walkers Brook Drive and other areas. Um we're constantly having to try to coordinate work with, you know, paving and national grid and and the like. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of complaints, especially lately with everything. I actually had somebody say, I can't wait for it to snow so that you guys will be off the road. So, you know, I get it. It is, somebody counted seven detours um between all the projects that we're doing and and others are doing in town. So it's, you know, it's an inconvenience. Absolutely. Next. So enterprise level one summary, there are no changes in water source, staff, stormwater, salaries or staffing. Uh I should say staffing, not salaries. Um expenses slightly up for police details, uh carpet tubing, that type of stuff. Of course, the water, the M W R A assessment is is up. We did have to increase for hazardous waste disposal. That's the hazardous waste day. So we pay for some of that on out of water and SOAR. Um and stormwater is level funded. Next. And that's sort of a summary of the increases between twenty three and twenty four.
Wow, thank you. Any questions for members? Well, good. Thank you. That's um, it it's it's incredible. Thank you for managing all this. And I'm happy to hear that the trash is going better.
Good. I'm glad. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Good job, Jane. Good job, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we are all set for the evening. Yeah, till next.
Oh, my God, you didn't present tonight? Okay.
No, we need to listen.
Now, that's really nice. I know, I'm not, I was just like, oh, my God, it's a long night. You could have listened from home. So that was really nice of you to come and sit with these guys in their uncomfortable chairs. I know.
I thought everyone was going to be here, right?
Everyone is. All right.
It was so nice to see you.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Close.
See you soon, Zevi.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.